Yes, exactly.
How are you, Matt?
Oh.
Say hello to me.
Well, sir, good to see you. Good evening. Thank you for joining the Town of Scottsville work session for Monday, February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. My name is Matt Lawless, and I serve as the Scottsville Town Administrator. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Virginia Open Meeting Law, and the Town of Scottsville's ordinance on the continuity of government during the COVID-nineteen emergency. The meeting is held in a hybrid format, both online and in person here at the town hall, four oh one Valley Street. The meeting is open to the public, and everyone is welcome to participate and be involved here. We have options for public engagement, both in person at the meeting and online and by phone, by calling in or Zoom. If you're viewing this meeting in the future on the town's YouTube channel, thank you very much as well for that. As you can hear, we're still coming to order, assembling our forum, and getting set up for the meeting. The local time here now is ten minutes until seven o'clock, which is the supposed start time for the meeting. So on your reporting, if you'd like to skip ahead ten minutes, you'll see us come to order and javelin. For the moment now, I'll use this line while we get set up and prep. Thank you very much.
Good, Mr. Mayor, how are you, sir? We didn't have much of it.
Yes, sir.
We've been hammered with enough of that stuff since I've been here as your chief. Mr. Mayor, thank you, and ladies and gentlemen of council, thank you for having me, and allow me to kind who will spend with you this afternoon, this evening. First order of business, I would like to introduce our newest addition to the Scottsville Police Department, Joseph Brad Wood. He was hired on Friday and was sworn in today with the Circuit Court clerk as one of our newest officers. This is his wife, Lori. Bring her down as well and introduce the family to all of our council members, just so you guys can put a face with the name.
What's your name again?
Joseph.
Joseph.
Yeah, I go by Brad. It's Joseph Brad.
Welcome. We're excited to have you. Looking forward to serving this year. Thank you.
It's good to have you, Brad. Thank you. Let's see, I think everyone has a copy of just some of the notes that I put together over the past thirty days. We did get an email from one of our esteemed council members about the Patriot Front stickers that were being placed around the town. I guess now it's probably been about two and a half months ago. I wanted to let everyone know that I have gone up to Terry Page shop at East Maine and just double-checked with them on their video system, just to see if we could get any video footage of anybody that might be bringing these stickers around through the town and putting them up on the light poles here in the town. But he was telling me that because of the time that had passed, the video system had already taken over itself, so there was no video footage. I did reach out to the district commander with Albemarle County Police Department and let them know that we did have a problem down here at one point, and also the Fluvan Sheriff's Office has been made aware of it as well. So hopefully, Michael Wood, we won't have any more of that activity, and thank you for bringing that to my attention. I certainly appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you for taking care of it.
Also, the mayor and vice mayor Briscoe informed me that picnic table down at the Abbot Creek Natural Area had been tossed into the lake down there. So I went down as soon as you had made me aware of it, and it's definitely in the lake. That day, I've gone by the fire department to see if maybe we could get one of the fire department's boats to go down and pull it out. However, the lake was still iced over, and I couldn't get a boat down there to be able to pull it back shore. It's right where the spillway is at the dam area of the lake, and it's still floating on the top of the water, top of Tim Car. And as soon as we can get the water and they they have a weekend, they're going to go down and put a boat in and try to pull it out.
It might be nice. First of all, thank you for, I was just going to say, maybe publicly, it might be nice for anybody out there knows who did it. Let the police chief, no, I don't know that we would, you know, ourselves, but if anybody's aware that we did that, it helps them out.
Yes, sir. I might make a suggestion. If we get that out of the lake down there, maybe we can secure that table. I'm not sure sure exactly where down there was on the property, but maybe we could secure it with a chain and a lock or something to where nobody else gets the bright idea from it in the lake again.
We have discussed ways of securing it, so we're working on that.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Also wanted to let the town know that I've been working with the county police department's traffic commander. I know from time to time, Matt and I get complaints about speeding through the town, and I know it's a concern of our council here. What I wanted to do is, so in the morning and in the evening, I wanted to kind of get an idea for myself. So I spent some time before the sun come up down here at different locations in the town, early in the morning, just to see for myself what might be going on with the speeding. And, you know, the highest speed that I was able to clock on radar was forty miles an hour, and that was going out of town up where the car lot's at, the used car lot was at. So what I thought I would do is instead of just haphazardly, you know, taking that shotgun approach to try to figure out, do we have a problem, number one? And if we do have a problem, when are we having the problems? Is it in the morning? Is it that commute in to work every day and the commute home every day? So what they've agreed in this Monday, what they're going to do is they're going to come down and put a stealth stat and do a stealth stat speed study for me, and we're going to do it in three different locations of the town. One location, I thought we would do it here in the town where the business area is at, so capture the data there, and then move it up just a little bit further towards the car lot, capture the data there, speeding, the speed coming into town, going just out of the town, away from the businesses, and then take it from about Lumpkin's up to the town limits there, as it goes up to the co-op. So three different, I say studies, but to capture three different speeding areas or speed areas, just to see, okay, do we have the problem, and then where do we need to target the problem, and what days and times of the week do we need to target the problem?
East Maine is also, yeah, I think more so even than Valley Street. You could probably speak to that more than me.
Yeah, there's the levee wall right there, you know, sort of, people arrive in town there, coming in pretty fast, where they accelerate out. So that might be another point, you know, to look at at some point.
Maybe by the old GoPro.
I studied on East Maine several years ago. Surprisingly enough, most people were in twenty-five or twenty-eight miles per hour.
That is surprising.
It is surprising. I thought it'd be a lot more than that.
I did go down there and set up one morning and one afternoon, one of the evenings, just to see what the speeds were, and like the mayor said, the speeds were within that, you know, five, six, seven mile tolerance within that speed zone there. But I thought Valley Street would be the first place to really start, because that seems to be where we get most of our complaints from is on Valley Street, but I will absolutely keep that in mind for the next time.
For a while, we had a, just a big sign that showed your speed as you came into town, and that seemed to be pretty effective at slowing people down for a while. The effect has since worn off, but I don't know if we could get something like that again sometime. So, so we do have the speed sign that was donated to the town. The, what we found before I got to the town was the batteries had gone in the machine. Okay. So we'll have to definitely replace the battery system in the machine, or when I was at the chief's conference two weeks ago, I was looking at a new system that actually does capture speeds, prints us a report, and I think it was twelve thousand dollars for that whole mobile trailer system. This system right now that's at the police department, we've got it plugged in to the wall so we can at least notify motorists coming across the bridge in that twenty-five mile an hour zone, what their speeds are there. And you know, on James River Road, we have the one-speed sign, and then coming in on about six feet at the one-speed sign. I sat out there on Irish Road the other evening, and that speed sign seems to be working fairly well with slowing motorists down. At least it gets their attention. But thank you for pointing that out. A couple of significant calls for service that we had during the past month. The dispatchers dispatched a BOLO out from Albemarle County. A buried bib was wanted for burglary, robbery, and abduction out of Fluvan County. Also, Barnett stopped the vehicle just on the backside of the tavern. Mr. Bibb was hiding in the backseat. He was able to take him into custody, and that Fluvan served warrants. On him, there was an accident one night, I think it was a Friday night into a Saturday morning, where we had a, it appears to be a drunk driver involved accident. Because of his medical condition at the time, we had to do a blood draw, so we're waiting on the forensics to come back before we decide whether or not we're going to seek any criminal charges. Of course, Ms. May talk about the snowstorm again. As everyone knows, we had another snowstorm on that January the sixteenth and seventeenth, but there were no major incidents that come out of that event. Community engagement events that we've got, we're working on as a department. Officer Barnett assisted the ACPD at the Boys and Girls Club this past month, handing out stickers and talking about police officers' responsibilities. I've been in contact with several of the local pastors here in the town, and I've heard back from three of the five. I do have a meeting with one of the pastors, Pastor Brown, on the seventeenth. Her and I are going to come up to your shop and have coffee one morning. And I also have another meeting with their clergy collective on the third. That'll be most likely a Zoom meeting, but I've been invited to come to that meeting at nine o'clock and hopefully be able to start that working relationship with our local pastors. I know we have gotten some complaints about the parking on Sundays up on Harrison Street at the intersections. So my hope is, is to engage our pastors, and maybe we can share the word that there is some concerns about, you know, parking too close to the intersections there before we have to do any type of enforcement type stuff. Our auxiliary officers, oh, I also wanted to talk about, we've been working with our community partner at Baines Books and Coffee to bring a shop with a cop event for the community residents. It looks like, been working with ACPD, you know, their sector officers are key to our success here in the town. When our police officers can't be in the town, you know, Albemarle County does cover most of those early morning calls for us. So I really wanted to work with their new deputy chief, Terry Walls, of their operations bureau, and invite their district officers down to the event as well. So our community members get an opportunity, not just to meet our police officers, but meet the officers from ACPD that are working our area down here as well. So I've been working with Meredith, Meredith, and she's been very kind to help us get that set up. So it does look like the twenty-first, but as soon as I get more information, I'll make sure each one of you get it. As you can see here, our auxiliary officers have been putting in a lot of volunteer time with our police department. John Ball, he is, his profession is AT, and John, since August of last year, has put in two hundred-plus hours with us at the police department. He's actually got us to a point where we're able to get our body-worn cameras up on the server, and now we're configuring all of our in-car cameras to where our in-car cameras will configure with the server, and when our officers pull in that back lot back there, the video footage is automatically streaming and uploaded to our server automatically. So we're not having to spend hours in the field trying to export this stuff out of phone drops. So I think that's, I think that's one of those next levels to help protect us and protect the town against any claims. You know, I think it's best practice to have body-worn cameras, especially for a department our size. I think it's that next level of professionalism for us. We've really been working hard at getting them up and going. Our APOs have also been helping us, as you can see, about sixteen hours of patrol time. What I tried to do is just do a calculation for you so you could get an idea of how many hours they're spending with us and about how much money they're actually saving our community and our town for the amount of time that they're dedicated to us at the, at the police department. I wanted to, last couple of notes, twenty-six new policies been updated and put in place. Couple of the highlights, standards of conduct, vehicle pursuits, use of force, firearms, all those policies have been updated, they've been reviewed, and now we're putting them up on our server and housing them as well. We're pushing them out to our officers. They're acknowledging, receiving the policies and reading them. So we're in a pretty good shape right there. We talked about the body-worn cameras. We're still waiting on the delivery of our one police car that Matt was so gracious to get off of the egg rack for us. When I was at the chief's conference, they said that car was going to be done Wednesday, but I haven't gotten a call yet and picked it up. I think they delivered to us, but I haven't got a call yet. Another car that I'll be picking up tomorrow from Colonial, it had a lot of front-end undercarriage damage, and we had to spend some money on maintenance on the front of that car, but it has ninety thousand, ninety-three thousand miles on it. So I suspect we would probably be able to get another forty, fifty thousand miles out of it to take care of. So I'll go pick it up tomorrow from Colonial, and we'll be able to put Brad, our new officer, in that. So, okay. Just a great job on the community engagement. I think that's, you know, something we haven't really done a lot of in the past, and I think that's a great way to teach people. So thank you for being creative with that. Well, my goal is not to inundate you members with statistics. You know, that's easy. But what I want to, want you to know is what your police department's doing for our community and for, try to meet your expectations as well. So if I'm missing the marks in place, or you have something for me, please let me know, and I'll do my best to make sure that, that I get on it and we get it taken care of expeditions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chamber of Commerce, we had a board meeting recently, and we just talked about recognizing some of the businesses that are new to town. As maybe as soon as the weather gets a little warmer, we'll have some ribbon-cutting ceremonies, particularly if they are businesses that have joined Chambers. So just trying to get, get our ducks in the road for that one, and I'll be posted. Mr. Bullock, what's going on with the RVs?
A lot. We, we took a look at the Tiger Fuel site plan at our last meeting with Representative Tiger Fuel, and so I think we're going to sit with that for a while. I think we have some interest in understanding where the site's going to go, where the pumps are going to go, where the build, how the building is going to be situated on the site. Those are all questions that people raise. We all know that based on our feedback here, that entrance quarter is a pretty sensitive spot, especially in terms of trees. And I know that we are, we asked for Tiger Fuel, they did a tree study or something like that, we asked for that, but I know some people on the board have just been visiting the site. So we'll see, but I think, I think this will take a little while, which is good. I know the planning commission's doing work on it, but we had our first sort of round of discussions and questions, and I think our next meeting, we'll be able to make some, some steps with it.
If you can get those blueprints sent, sir, so if you want to take one of those home with you to look at after meetings for my, I don't have the drawings.
Yep. Well, that was our largest discussion. We're also, we approved three COAs for rehabilitated work that's going to happen on three properties downtown. They're recently purchased, and some plans for updating them are impressive, to say the least. The Farmstead Tremens Building, the Old First Community Building, and then the Telephone Exchange is right behind it. So some really impressive work is going to be done there. So it's pleasant. It was a really nice example of the process. You know, we got a good plan, we got nice material, we got a good conversation about what's going to be done. The RV was able to provide some comments and sort of work through that, so it was a really good model of how that goes, and you get a good product at the end. So I'm looking forward to the investments that's going to be made in those buildings soon. Our inventory is still, our inventory is done. I think we'll have a conversation about that our next meeting. Did you get those things for me, the folder of pictures and the chair?
Yes.
Okay, cool. We're getting on one drive. Okay, cool. We're getting on one drive, so everything's all together. Let's see, our general question, entrance toward corridor question, I couldn't help but notice the container that was dropped on the site the other day.
They have, they're redoing the electrical inside, everything from freezers to cash registers. I confirmed from them that there's not any exterior work going on, it's only inside electrical. I asked them about keeping a tidy worksite. But I, I wasn't sure in the moment what the status of, of the shipping container was for temporary construction storage.
Yes.
We're looking into some more.
I think so. I definitely think so. Yeah, thanks. And then lastly, we have made a recommendation for appointment to fill our last vacancy on the board. Austin Twitchell, I'd like to get his name on our public session for next time. But lives in town to the requirement, also lives in his district, a bonus criteria. I like to get people in town or also in the district to serve on the board. But he figured getting involved in town, this will be his first committee appointment, but he's, he's already jumping in. So please to have him on board. And that falls from the RV.
Any questions for Mr. Bullock? And we'll go to planning commission and our representative vice mayor, Rupstho, what's going on?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week was my first meeting with the planning commission and there were a number of eventful things that happened. First was the filling of the chair and the vice chair, Lisa Calabiano is the new chair. And Shannon Strasser is the new vice chair. I think that was great that they were both nominated and elected to take those positions. We then talked about basically a use, a special use permit for the Goco Station. There's a desire to have that reopened and we talked to the owner and had a very productive discussion about that. And if I'm saying this correctly, there's gonna be a public meeting coming up about that, correct?
Correct.
It's reported to this body. And then we also had a new business proposal for four seventy-four Valley and four ninety-six Valley. These were for special use permits of a, a couple of different Airbnbs. And it basically would be taking these buildings and would be making them accessible for use. We had a really productive conversation with the new owner. And it was, I think, really encouraging this owner. And her husband moved from Northern Virginia, I believe it was about six or seven months ago, was really encouraged about what we have going on here in Scottsville. And is interested in joining in. So we talked about it as a planning commission. And again, if I'm saying this correctly, Matt, we're going to have a public hearing for that also.
Now, is that in addition to the other two requests for Airbnbs that we're gonna be talking about?
I feel like there was one on East Main Street. These are different. This is a different, this is a new. Yeah, this is a new proposal. And then we had a presentation about home business regulations. That was very interesting. And it basically talked about the difference between being Class A and Class B. And the size of the space and the house that's used toward the business. There's a right that any person has who lives in a residence to work from home. But if you get into hiring somebody, then it kind of changed it. So there was a good presentation about that. And one of the things that I think is helpful to know with the changing nature of the impact of COVID and the new business environment that we're gonna face coming out of it, these are issues that we from town are going to probably look at more. And it was, I thought, a really good, it was more of an informational conversation. Matt, or anything else you could add to that?
It, it came in particular at the request of a family that was buying some farm property on Buffalo Springs Road. And bringing a really interesting home-based workshop, kind of like manufacturing business to that. So it is connected to economic development work. It's not, it's not just a research project for its own sake.
And maybe lastly, I would say as a new town councillor on the planning commission, I wanted to take time to explain to the planning commissioners how thankful we are for the work that they did. Especially on the proposals that we're now dealing with as a town council, given all the many hours and actually years that they've put in on this effort. So just wanted to say a special thanks to them, thankful for their proposals, their time, their energy. And they were appreciative of that. So it's just recognizing that. One of the things I know as a town councillor quite often, ninety percent of what we do, most people don't know what it is. And it's, I think they appreciate, especially give us the work that they did, get us those proposals. And giving us the opportunity to have some really good dialogue coming up as we complete that. Mr. Mayor, that would be my report.
Thank you. Mr. Rupstho, any questions for Mr. Rupstho?
Thank you, Matt. We have a little bit more budget discussion later down in the agenda. The town government services committee volunteers have been very helpful with prep for that. But as far as kind of bookkeeping and accounting part of it, the good news in the past month relates to business licenses and also grant revenue. Business license renewals are underway and that's a good opportunity for town staff, especially Mr. Alex, to check in with businesses, make introductions and catch up on that, that it's, it's once a year revenue. It's one of the town's largest revenue sources and it all comes in between now and about May. So it really helps our balance sheet at this point to start to see that revenue come in. There were also two large grant payments that came in, in the past couple of weeks totaling fifty thousand dollars. Which if I briefly, that really, it's important in how we run our grant projects to think about the timing of those payments. And one of them was for the small business launch program that we're running now. That agency was willing to pay us in advance, which really helps with our town cash. When the agency knows us and it's a good working relationship, they can give us that money trusting that we're gonna perform on the grant. And we're not floating those costs, waiting for reimbursement. The other was a flood control grant, which the town was awarded last year. We finished that work in September, but didn't receive the ten thousand dollar payment until just last week. Because the agency is shorthanded, the staff and management were running lots of different projects and they processed our final report very slowly. So the town is out of that money for almost half of this year. And that makes our work harder. So when I, when I consider grant projects and the town takes on more of these, one of the things to be aware of is how capable is our agency partner? How quickly or how effective are they actually getting us the money? Because finishing work and then being on the hook for revenue doesn't feel good.
Matt, if you don't mind me just dialing up just for a second, so I'm saying this mostly for our two new town councillors. So Matt, how long have you been with us now?
Almost four years.
It looked like it was just yesterday. But what I was gonna say, it's probably helpful for the public to hear this too, this is a little bit of bragging on Matt. For a couple of different reasons. One is, as he came, he really took us into a new era of really going after these. So one of the things that could happen for our town is we're really, they strengthen if we go after lots of different grants along the way. And it's not an easy process. You have to know the agency, you have to know what's going on, you gotta pay attention to it. And it can make a dramatic difference in what we do. So first of all, Matt, I just wanna, I'll tell some praises to you. But on the other hand, as you all have ideas, like you all may have interests or passions, it takes work. In the hard area that I've been involved in, we've both been successful and unsuccessful with grants. And that's a huge source of opportunity for us in the future. And I would take advantage of these guys over there and think of whatever area of interest you all have to see what that might be for the town. And again, Matt, you brought up, at some point it'd be interesting to see a number of that distributed to you, but it's already quite happy. So thank you for what you do with that. It's, it really is appreciated. And again, I see the difference having been here a while. I'm sure, Mr. Mayor, you do, the difference of what the quality of this leadership in that regard. I, I think it's, it's huge. So thank you. Thank you for what you're doing.
Anything else, Mr. Holmes? Any questions from Matt? Before we move on to my report, let's see, my friend Judy Brown working in the audience. Did you have something you wanted to say to us this evening, or just here?
There, there are three of us that we have a few ideas for the James River Boys and Girls Club.
All right, step forward and I can still hear.
Oh, Amanda Jones is behind it. Thanks for having us. Thank you so much. This is a very appropriate night on Valentine's to express our love for the James River Boys and Girls Club. So thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council for having us. We wanted to tell you a little bit about the James River Club and a little bit about the best kept secret in Scottsville, which is the James River Boys and Girls Club. My name is Amanda Jones and I'm here along with my colleagues Judy Brown and James Hocken. To talk a little bit about the James River Club, the Boys and Girls Club, which is right around the corner. And to give you a little insight on what we do, what we provide and our thoughts going forward for the town of Scottsville. We're here tonight to request funding for our club in the amount of ten thousand dollars. While that would seem like a very large amount on a very small, limited budget of the town of Scottsville, which we're here and totally appreciate. We would consider that five thousand dollars could be a budgetary item coming from the town of Scottsville for sponsorship of local children in the community for their club memberships. And we'll get to the details of that in just a little bit. And then a five thousand dollar, one-time-only grant from the ARPA funds that the town of Scottsville has received from the federal government in the last year during the COVID pandemic. We provide a service for children, social, emotional wellness. And that falls in line with what the ARPA funds were designated for. So let me tell you a little bit about what the important role of this James River Club in the Scottsville community is. You were mentioning grants. We rely on grants a lot at the James River Boys and Girls Club. And we certainly appreciate Matt's efforts and being an advocate for the town. We are so proud to be part of this community. We have the surrounding resources from Scottsville. The James River, the ball fields, the library, the main street. All of that adds to the enhancement that our kids, club kids get at the James River Club. So being in the town of Scottsville really adds to the exceptional part of being a club member there. Funding from the town would be key endorsement of the club's programs and activities. And which we would hope at this point and going forward, that we could work toward a stronger town club relationship with partnerships so that our programming could be ingrained truly throughout the community. We have reached out recently to several organizations in town, the James River Association. We have lots of great ideas and strategies and partnerships in the works with them for our kids, club members and parents. So we would really like to just kind of get on your radar and tell you that we're here. And we are so proud to be a part of this community. And we really would like to start establishing more partnerships with not only the town, but local businesses and other nonprofits in that area. While we are not an emergency service, we feel like we are an essential service. So I know that police services, I was very appreciative that the Scottsville Police Department went and spoke to some of our members and distributed stickers. We think it's very important for our kids to be around police officers or law enforcement in a positive setting as opposed to in a crisis type situation. So having local police officers stop by the club and just make their presence known and become a mentor to our kids is hugely helpful. And I wish I could have thanked him when he was here. So not only do we think that we are an essential service, but we are a, a very important part of the economic development of Scottsville. And I'll tell you a little bit more about how I think that happens a little bit later. But to give you a little history of who we are, we're gonna start with a little bit from Judy Brown, who the mayor mentioned. Judy, along with her husband, her late husband Jim Brown and several friends, saw the need for an affordable, impactful and engaging programming and opportunities for young kids in our area. So she banded together with a group of family and friends and raised one point five million dollars to open a club in two thousand fourteen. She was determined and set about a new role model that we have at the Boys and Girls Club. Of trying to raise at least five years of operating expenses to make the club sustainable going forward. So that we do not have to continually go back to our donors and ask for more money. So what that has allowed us to do is invest part of that money and take part of that money for our proceeds for our operating budget on an annual basis. We've been lucky enough that we did not have to do that until COVID hit. And when COVID hit, we really felt the economic downturn, as all of you did. And all of the members of Scottsville and the surrounding community did as well. So we were very thankful to Judy and her husband and group of family and friends that they were able to raise the money for us many years ago and that we could rely upon that. And we are, as we said, around the corner. We have the building, are the old school building leased from the Albemarle Parks and Recreation for one dollar a year. That started in two thousand fourteen. And we feel very honored and very humbled and very grateful that we have access to put to a perfect facility for what our needs are. And have plans for possible growth and remodeling and revitalization on the interior, yes, funds allow. In two thousand fourteen, when we opened our doors, we were serving two hundred members, two hundred club members, that means two hundred kids. Ninety-nine percent of our funding comes from donations and grants. And as I said, transfers from our funds that we, that donors so graciously gave us back in two thousand fourteen. Only one percent of our funding comes from the programming fees that we charge our members, our kids, our families. Our task was difficult, but our mission is very simple. We enable children, especially those who need us most, to realize their full potential as productive, responsible and caring citizens. And hopefully, as time allows, we'll be sitting in the chairs that you sit tonight. So that is our goal, that is our mission. We provide a safe space where kids can engage and highly enriching programming focused on priority outcomes. Our priority outcomes that we focus on are focused around five core elements. Academic success and career development. We offer that through programs like Power Hour, Career Launch, STEM, Arts and Drum Cycle. Our healthy lifestyles programs, our physical activity wellness, nature walks, mindfulness, mindfulness, social, emotional learning and life skills. And then finally, good character and citizenship shown through club and community service and leadership circles, leadership circles, excuse me. We employ two full-time and seven part-time staff members, mostly locals, who are putting dollars back into the Scottsville community on a yearly basis. This last year, we implemented our new increased living, standard living wage incentive for all staff across the board in all of our clubs. So that we could keep those mentors and people that had such a great impact on our kids in the lives of our kids on a day-to-day basis. We serve members, that's club kids, from two thirty to six thirty every day after school. And from seven thirty to five thirty PM during summer programs. Our member, our membership for children and families is anywhere from fifteen to thirteen dollars per calendar year. That keeps barriers low so that all families, all kids can access quality programming and our youth development services. Our actual cost per child is around twenty-three hundred dollars per year. So who are our members? Well, we serve children ages five to eighteen from Scottsville, Southern Albemarle County, Buckingham and Fluvan County. We serve approximately a hundred to a hundred and fifty members per year. About seventy of those after school during the school year and about eighty to ninety-five during the summer. During COVID, when schools were closed, we became a During COVID, when schools were closed, we became a school for children. So, we served about 40 to 43 kids every day from 7:30 to 6:30 in the evening so that they could have proper schooling with computers and resources readily available. Seventy-five percent of our members qualify for free and reduced meals at school. Thirty-nine percent come from single-parent households. Fifty-four percent are white, 33% are black, seven are Hispanic or Latino, five are two races or more, and 1% is considered other. So, getting back to why we think we are an essential service and a valuable component of your economic development. During COVID-19 pandemic, James River opened its doors from 5:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. in a full-day structure to provide remote learning when schools closed their doors. This allowed over 40,000 leads in your community to continue working during the pandemic and that their children could continue to the club with supervised and targeted school programs. We spoke to teachers in the local schools, found out what they needed and how we could best adjust the needs of their students. We serve as a food distribution site to provide food for the community. We've partnered with the Blue Ridge Health Department to provide the community with the opportunity to be vaccinated in June of 2021. As I talked about earlier, we provide quality, high-quality programming and a space, safe space for children and teens at a very affordable price, just $15 to $35 a year. The average childcare cost in our area is well above this price, around $13,000 annually. So, we are a pretty good deal and a well-kept secret here. Having access to affordable, quality childcare could be the deciding factor for families moving to the area and an essential service for many. So, as I look at new projects and new planning, I think that we are a great resource and a great selling point for families coming into the Scottsville community. So, how do we add value to the community? We're a return on your investment. The impact of our club extends well beyond our social value. We create an economic value as well. In 2015, a study by the Institute of Social Research at the University of Michigan found that for one, for every $1 invested in a Boys and Girls Club, $9.60 in economic benefits is returned to the community. An investment of $10,000 is requested, $5,000 from the budget and $5,000 from the ARPA benefits results in a nearly $100,000 of return on investment. So, just think about that. We are a viable economic resource. We provide parents with increased earning potential to provide safe and supervised environment for their kids after school. We are an economic development tool for the Scottsville communities, for families here now and those coming in the future. We are an important component to the family's decision-making process when choosing an area to live in or to move to. Finally, we save public dollars that the town spends on juvenile delinquency by engaging them in constructive and character-building activities when they could be otherwise up to trouble. So, in closing, I want to thank you again for your time and your consideration of this proposal. We are so grateful that we could share a bit about our, a bit about our club and tell you a little bit about our vision and broader community partnership and hopeful that we have piqued your interest in our club and that you would like to learn a little bit more about us. And we would gladly offer you a tour. Anytime you're available, we would love to bring you into the club and let you meet our members and see what we're really all about. We have an amazing staff. Some of our staff have been with the Boys and Girls Club since 2012. They live in the Scottsville community and they are passionate about building and enriching the lives of our children. So, we thank you for your time. Thank you for listening. And in any event, we hope that we, this is the beginning of a great partnership starting and becoming more visible in the Scottsville community. So, if there are any partnerships or items that you think the Scottsville, that the Boys and Girls Club might be good at volunteering or providing services for you, we are here to help. So, thank you for your time.
I was gonna say, I had two daughters that worked for the Boys and Girls Club. They loved doing so. They now are in their professional careers.
Yes.
A wonderful time that they had working there.
It is an amazing organization. I am new to the Boys and Girls Club and new to Virginia, but I have been overwhelmed and so impressed with the leadership, not only in the Central Virginia Boys and Girls Club, but the Scottsville James River Club as well. And so proud to be a part of it. You know, it does, it does take a lot of fundraising and donations and grant writing and proposals. And James is our master expert in terms of grants and Judy is our master in terms of fundraising. So, we have a great dedicated team. And Judy thankfully had a vision. She and her husband had a vision so many years ago and just would not stop until she saw it through. And so, we're very grateful to her and to her husband for providing this club.
I'd like to add before we go, I really wish that the town and the club could do more together. I bumped into people who say, "What? We have a Boys and Girls Club around here and it just doesn't seem to be integrated enough so that people know and so we can help the town." So, I wish that somehow we can more have, there's enough must change in both ways.
Well, I think we're all service providers and we are here to provide any type of volunteer service we can or community service with through parents, volunteers, and our club members. So, we are here to help as well.
Had you break down the age groups, I'm guessing in my head you have more younger than as you go.
You're absolutely correct. So, statistically, I actually have the numbers. About 47% are elementary school. Then we have around 30% of middle schoolers and our smallest percentage is of teens. And we find that we have fewer teens, kind of in that 17 to 18-year-old range because they are out in the job force, so they are working. But during the summer, that number for teens really climbs. So, our age group is from five. Students are children that are intended for, in case they're in order to come to the club, but so five to 18-years-old. But yes, you're absolutely right. Primarily more middle and elementary school children as opposed to teenagers. But we do have some teens. We did a garden cleanup not long ago. And our biggest group of supporters were all of our teens. They were really looking forward to getting out and being with others and getting out of the house and away from their parents and away from school activities and maybe getting a little bit of hot apple cider and some donuts for a little manual labor. But they were really ready to get back and going, get back in school and get back to regular programming, club activities, as opposed to just school. So, it was nice to be able to spend the Saturday morning with them and see what the teens are interested in because they are, you know, our immediate future. So, our focus is to really keep them engaged and keep them in programming activities that are truly beneficial now and in the future for them. So, but it is great to get those early minds and develop them as they come along and teach them leadership skills that they'll need.
I'm surprised when you said that 99% of your funding comes from donors and grants.
Yes.
Being a nationwide organization, there's not any kind, I have no idea how these organizations work, but I'm just surprised that there's not some kind of nationwide funding here is like,
Well, so we are a nonprofit.
Each club runs as an individual entity. It's not part of the nationwide organization.
It is totally a part of the nationwide organization. We have several different divisions across the country. And what the James River Club is a part of, the six-club Boys and Girls Club of Central Virginia. We each have our own operating budgets. We do operate as a unit of a larger Central Virginia club, but we do have our own operating budget. Our annual budget is around $466,000 a year. We spend 77% of that in programs, 11% in operations and occupancy, 12% in administrative. And our revenue direct down is 40% donations, 35% during COVID of our transfers from this fund that we have available to us. 9% is a living wage increase that we've just implemented across the, across the six clubs, 15% in grants and 1% from our program fees, which comes from our kids. So, we rely on lots of grants. And our revenue source comes primarily from donations. That can be a large individual donation. It can be a $25 donation from a parent or a club member. We do work with lots of corporations, lots of different foundations that we fit within their parameters of what they're looking to fund. And we've been super lucky in that we had several donors within the last couple of years that are really interested in the increased living wages of our workers and staff. Some of those that do two-to-one matching or three-to-one matching for different donations and grants that we are afforded. So, yes, we rely on the generosity of others. And that extends to grants that are produced by private foundations, private individuals, or the federal government.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Okay.
I have two on the agenda, Mayor's report. As Jay mentioned, I've been kind of in touch with him at least once or twice a week and especially when we had the bad weather. Same with Supervisor Price. She's had a really busy one with the board supervisors now that she's chairman. And so, we have talked at least once a week on the phone. There hasn't been anything really exciting going on in the county right now that affects us down here. So, we'll leave that at that right now. I did a podcast with Mayor Gill last week on the state redistricting and the map that was approved by the State Spring Board at the end of December. We talked about that for a bit. The biggest thing I've had done in the last couple of weeks was on the last Tuesday. I went to the Historical Society in Charlottesville. The family of the man named Wright, who grew up here, grew up in Charlottesville, and had a special relationship with Hat and Ferry. Donated $25,000 to the Hat and Ferry Fund. We did a one-in-a-one and I'll be surprised. Thank you ceremony. There were a lot of local officials. I met a state of Virginia underwater archaeologist. And we have talked since that meeting. He wants to come to Scottsville and the museum. Met a former member of the Texas State General Assembly or whatever they call it in Texas, who is retired, who moved to Lake Monticello. He wants to come to town and see what the history of these things looks like. So, other than those things, it's all good. Anyhow, it's been, of course, with the weather like it is, a lot of indoor activities on a computer rather than going out and meeting people. But that's pretty much my report. So, is Mr. Bowling with us, right? See if Mr. Bowling has anything.
I don't have much to add. Hello, how was everybody this evening? I don't have much to add from last Thursday. I just want to say, can you hear me?
Absolutely. The duck is coming out.
Uh-oh. Hold it. Let me see. Now try it. Anything there? Hello? Well?
Change speakers. Try to answer.
Pardon me? I'll come back.
Yeah, I think it's on our side. Nancy's saying, "Shoot me in the arse."
I'll try that again, sir.
Testing, testing.
One more time.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. It looks like you're unmuted.
Right, so you should be able to hear me? No?
Yes.
Well, I did, I'd been unmuted all along. How is everybody this evening?
Good. How are you?
I'm good. Since last Thursday, I don't have really much to report, but I wanted to say how much I enjoyed the discussion last Thursday. I thought it was insightful and everybody asked really good questions. I enjoyed the process. For your information, I have a little experience in planning and zoning for seven years, although long ago, for seven years, I represented the Almar County Planning Commission. So, that was my baptism afar. And currently, I represent the Almar County Board of Zoning Appeals, which is a pretty active quasi-judicial body on all kinds of different zoning appeals from decisions made by Almar County. If I don't pretend to know everything, what I am good at is finding the answer if I don't know it. So, if any members have any questions, please just give me a call or send me an email. I do better on the telephone than email, and I encourage you to do so. And I have looked in again at the conditions that you've laid out for the two projects before you. And I look forward to the discussion on this tonight. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Any questions, Mr. Bowling?
Mr. Bowling, Matt, you want to give him an update about what you found about the pond? That might be helpful to him or is it something you want to discuss? Oh, yes, sir. Thank you. The most urgent question that you raised, Mr. Bowling, at the work session last week was about the Virginia dam safety act.
Right.
We needed to go and measure that pond and see whether the act applied. And the applicant and I both independently measured it. And we used a little bit different formulas, but we both arrived at an answer that it was much, very well under the threshold for eligibility. It is exact.
Well, that's good news. That's very good news. The danger here is that you'll find yourself swept into the dam safety act eight years in the future and all of a sudden have to expend $142,000 for concrete spillway construction. So, that's a, it's a real risk. And if that's out of the picture, then you certainly can consider taking over that pond. Although, I will caution you that their maintenance responsibilities, having been a pond owner in the past, what's filled up, fills up with silt a lot quicker than you would think. And when that happens, you have to, there's pressure to dredge it out.
Just so I say this, fellow town councilors, when Matt and I talked today, and this is again, this is where, you know, Superman wears a cape sometimes. Today, Matt is wearing his cape. As we chatted on this particular issue, Matt went over there today and he spent the time doing this research. And that's not easy to do. And I, I was glad you didn't go swimming, Matt. I was glad that didn't happen so you could have to go to depth issue. But I am thankful and given the conditions and not better, I think it was really admirable that you did that because this is a really important piece of information that we got straight. So, when we had our conversation the other night, one of the factors that we were addressing as we come up with the right proposal was to make sure that that body of water was underneath. The right proposal was to make sure that that body of water was underneath and what you're saying now, would you say well underneath? Tell me what you mean.
Um it, the the unit of volume for a pond is called an acre foot. Imagine a puddle that's one acre big and one foot deep. That's how we measure how much water is in a pond. To be a regulated dam of impoundment, it would need to be fifteen acre feet. And depending how you measure the edge of it, this one is between five and seven. Um it's not half the size that it would need to be.
That's, that's really good news. And the other question that we had is in terms of understanding it, in terms of the overall proposal, so that the thought was the land. And the pond and putting them together, the common area that we were talking about. So, and Mr. Bowling, again, you're always going to give us. Information. In fact, one of the things I miss is years ago when you and Barry would debate each other all the time. That to me was. One of the things that you town councilors don't know, newer town councilors, is Mr. Bowling will tell us something and that's what we hear, but. Years ago, there used to be a debate between lawyers all the time and then we were the petitionaries, so. Barry would come along and say, no, Mr. Bowling, I don't agree with that. They would debate back and forth and it was always quite a, an interesting learning experience. So we thank you.
It was a learn, I thank you, it's a learning experience for me too.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bowling. If no further questions, let's turn it back over to Matt and you can do a faster report.
Uh just thank you, Matt. Um it is some general assembly session going on now. They're at their halfway point in the session tomorrow. So it gets a little bit easier to watch what the general assembly is doing because each chamber sends what it has finished over to the other side. And they can't raise any new business, so we know a little bit better where they're staying, which bills are staying alive or dead after tomorrow. Um there is um one bill that I called in on today to follow up on one of town councils initiatives. Um we had previously expressed the preference that the town elections stay in May, as they had traditionally been instead of moving. So there is a bill attempting to repeal what the general assembly did last year and restore the local option for May elections. That will exist in the House and has not been voted on yet, so it will either be a um down-to-the-wire vote uh tomorrow. Or the House could sort of maneuver around, take any stance on it by letting it go by on the deadline and that would um effectively do it. So I did, I did call into that um uh delegate's office, thanking them for their work and called the um. Uh delegate Bill's office representing us here, mentioning that that was a town priority. Um I have a um alumni-related legislative visit next week, um which is helpful for networking, but also gives a chance to. To represent the town. There's not much of a legislative calendar there, um mostly building relationships for the future. But if there's anything that you see that's, seems important for the town, I'll be making the trip and happy to put a word in uh next Wednesday. Most of the rest of our work is related to land use and budget matters that are further down on agenda. But we do have some other small projects like um the park repairs efforts underway and there's so many. We've got an excellent volunteer team out working in the community, cleaning up storm damage in the parks in the past couple of months and uh. I really appreciate the help, especially from Jack Maxwell and getting word out and um it's very encouraging to see friends with Changsaws um helping clean up the parks.
Any questions for Matt?
Other administrator, are we on the?
Other administrator.
The um, yeah, so I'm sure, I've just read down here about the solar panels. So it would cost sixty thousand to install and then I see that it's a grant involved, it's very cool. So how how quickly would we have done? I guess it'd be three, so we've got really a little fifteen Gs. How how do you know, what would we like to make up the fifteen Gs in electric savings? You pulled those bills for me, but I haven't had a chance to tally them. Did you, did you get a first impression?
Yes, it was about three and a half years, I think, just taking our. Recent last six months of phone bills and dividing it over the amount to get an average.
Yeah, the um the vendors run a payback calculation of a full price and they see about a fifteen-year payback. But but they didn't know that we were getting federal health protocols, so that turns out to be a free for each.
What's the lifespan on those solar panels, if you have any idea?
They're, they're warranted for thirty years. Um the companies that have been at this for a long time are beginning to see some older systems and they're. Optimistic that they're going to last longer than that. You don't need to fully replace. Very first ones they were installing are getting up in years, but are not failing at the rate that they're going to work.
Is it going out to bid or has the company been?
I I put it, I put out a request for proposals and got three bids from um Charlottesville-based companies on it. Um they were within five thousand dollars of each other using um slightly different equipment. Um but the basic layout is the same. It's it's, I'm I'm asking about covering the um south-facing roof of this building. Um that would offset all of the electric bills, take uh this meter.
And then, but you do have to realize that in the venerable powerhouses, they don't work.
Well said, yes.
Because, because it's a hazard to people working on the water, so it's not a, it's not a substitute for generator.
That's right. That would be, that would be a different scope if you wanted to harden this building to also add a jet.
Two other just budget project things. I know we're talking about money, the sort of, you know, the dock, the DCNA. And I also jumped in on that because we're coming up on the spring and I, the boulders and tree planting that we want to do this spring down the riverfront. Do you see these things that sound together? And if not, what what, I think it'd be good to get a report on like where we are at the riverfront for the spring.
Sure. Um I've got, um I got pricing on the stone. And it did cost about twice as much as I thought it would. We can accommodate that within the um existing town budgets. So that line will go over, but other lines in our budget have have come under, and so that's okay. So I do expect to deliver the trees and the stone on the riverfront that was the first phase of green infrastructure described. One of our questions for next year's budget is, are we satisfied with that project? Do we want to move ahead to phase two on it? Um on the, on the dock up at the lake, we have what's now a several-year-old agreement with um. Department of Wildlife Resources to operate efficiency here, where they would provide us a floating dock and then we would maintain it in the future. That department has had trouble finding money for that and they asked for some help in kind of designing it. So I did that procurement work and found modular systems and kind of gave them a range of options where the smallest one that would work would be about twenty-five thousand dollars. The really big Cadillac version would be close to the seventy-five thousand. Um so I delivered that and then found. An increased budget line in the current general assembly budget for that agency. The department is getting an extra eight hundred thousand dollars for which this kind of work would be eligible. So at at risk of putting them on the spot, um we've been under contract with them for three years and not received a doc and now they're getting. Almost a million dollars. It'd be nice if we were at the proper place, yeah.
I get it. And just to follow up, one other thing is Matt, again, has done a great job following up on this. In our relationship with them, they had give, they had a twenty-five thousand, I'm sorry, they had a fifteen thousand dollar dock they were going to give us. It was. You know, a couple of months away from it happening and then there was a change in the procurement policy of the state. And at the time, it would have doubled or tripled the cost of the dock and it just literally killed the project. It's just, that's an example of. Not the wisest thinking in terms of the way government can work. And so they literally, they couldn't give us that even though they had money that this was a couple of years ago. And then with all of that with COVID anyway, so the nice part about it is we're back to talking to them again, all the way back to what we started. Dialogue and it just so you don't know, maybe, yeah, maybe this is also helpful to give a little history. Long ago, simply contacted them as they came and checked out Scottsdale Lake and from that they've started stocking it. We've probably been seven or eight years where we've got to stock with trout and catfish and. They've had a really good relationship with us for many, many years. If you put a value on the the fish that are put in the lake each time, maybe twelve to fifteen hundred dollars each time, fish in the lake, so that, and that happens nine times a year. One time, okay, so, so one time a year it's catfish, eight times it's trout. And so today, let's go fishing. So the thing that, to say about that is. Our long-term relationship with them has been really good and it's been, this Jonathan, would be good to. Bring him back here so we can chat again and see, but they also were the ones that gave us the good advice on the river, so they they also are. Engaged there. In fact, that may be, next time they come out, they may exactly might want to be a part of that conversation too or or others, yeah.
And and my second question, this is followed from previously, I spoke with Frank Sherwood about the packet boat. Um for the needs work and and he and I had talked about getting a crew together to sit down and do it. But we will need to pay for it. And he had mentioned that he had done an itemized list of like expected repairs. And costs. Do you think you can find that? Sure, um somewhat, yes. In an email? For sure. Um between that to-do list and the budget line that you have, I think that would be ready to go out to bid. The the volunteer team is not as strong as it used to be. Many of the. I'm sorry? You go out to bid and fix it. I think so. Um that that um, Mr. Small having passed away, Mr. Bowers being told retired. The the volunteer expertise is not what it used to be. And and we have a budget line for that, so I think. Give it, with the state that it's in now, I think um getting that work done faster and putting so much into it's otherwise. Okay, yeah, great. Thank you.
Does that, uh, is there anyone who could include? Um the uh the orange barrel that's up there as well to the.
Yes.
Time.
Yes.
But it needs to be varnish and there's some other things like that around. So can we get all of that done at the same time as part of that line item or is that something?
Um it goes together. The the line item is um canal basin square. It's, it's, so I I wouldn't distinguish between the boats and the other things that are around it. Where to put that together, you know, carpenters.
Okay.
We have a. More budget overview, we go so that it.
Is that time of year? Um the um, the town's budget adoption is targeted for May. For a new budget year that starts in July. We have the month of June for extra meetings. But it does make life um easier for the town clerk setting up a budget. There's a couple of weeks before New Year's on July first to get it there. Um the town, working backwards from that date, the town needs to advertise tax rates and the ceiling on the budget. Um and hold a public hearing on those numbers um the month before. Uh we can, um the adopted budget represents a cost control. We cannot spend more than the amount of money that's in that budget by department without coming back to council for a supplemental appropriation. So the the financial reports that we see each month show our progress towards that. Um and I report that progress and if if things are costing more than we thought they would, provide that for you as a course correction. And you either instruct us to cut spending and make it work within the budget, um or if it needs to be increased, you can consider that supplemental. Uh we're on track now in all of our departments except the DMV select. The setup costs for that service cost more than we thought they would. Um from the construction to the um to the furniture and actually everything, construction and uh computer related. Went up in price more than we thought it would. Um so all of our departments are in good shape except for that one. If that continues. The options would be to reduce the hours at the end of the year, bring it under control or make a supplemental appropriation in low range of fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. Um we'll continue to monitor that and try to put a pin on that number. Looking ahead for next year, the Boys and Girls Club presentation represents a good example of the kind of um. Goal-setting and concept conversation that I'd like to have at this point. I don't have line item details on our budget. Except to kind of the the general news that you've seen of, you know, the effects of inflation and wage pressure. The cost of most of what we do is ticking up. Um gas prices haven't been so bad. Um but vehicle repairs, computer equipment, those things are getting more expensive and you'll probably see those line items stick up. Um we also try to maintain um competitive pay and you see the example of introducing a new police officer. We're right at the edge of um competitive wage levels. We we pay more than Buckingham. Um but less than Savannah, Marl, and Charles. And I think we need to be close on those or um. Other localities were very tempting. Um we lost one officer to Nelson Garry um in uh in the past year. Um but um I I'd invite conversation here now about sort of, you know, goals for the town finances. What are some of the projects you'd like to see? What's your hope for the American Rescue Plan funding, which has a couple of years left to use? Um what should I, what should be my guidance and put together draft projects that you need to see done? Um or changes that you want to make and how the time goes.
And let me ask you this question, this one other money baseline. With the revenue that we have that comes in. How is that stream going in terms of what normal funding sources we see so far as you as you project into this year? How do you see that?
It's shaky. Um the the, I did not want to go overload with data this early in the conversation. The one graph that I wanted to make is in this packet for the town's own core revenues. The meals tax, the business license, bank franchise and cigarette tax are our top four revenue sources. And those are the ones that we have control over. Town council sets those tax rates. Um and you see that graph going up and down. Um we're still. Javier and I took a forecast for the current year and the next year and we're still not back at the level of twenty nineteen. We've made a fair amount of recovery, but not complete to the pre-pandemic. But many of our costs are higher than they were in twenty nineteen. American Rescue Plan is helping to fill that gap, which is part of the point of the bill. It's totally okay to use that to damage control. Um but when it runs out in twenty-five, I do think we're going to be at a risky point of structural deficit. Where the town costs will have gone up and the local economic growth will not have kept up. That's a a looming problem. Ideally, this graph that I showed you would be a straight line swanking up enough to cover inflation and growth. And the rising cost of cars and races for everyone. And this graph does not do that.
That's, that's helpful because one of the things going back to the DMV select was. We had hoped that could be at least paid for itself and then maybe be a source of revenue, so. If it's, if it's a constant draw, then that's a, we probably do have to back ours or something in a very near term. To figure out what to do or or the other hand is. Kind of understanding where the. Where the leaks are, so to speak, at the moment. I know you do a good job of that already, but understand where the leaks are and then figuring out. What we're, what we're actually dealing with because as we then project into next year's budget. We have a better understanding and hopefully, at the moment at least with Omipron decreasing. That I would have meant as we're coming into spring, spring is a better time for Scottsdale. It seems as though. In your projection, do you take that into account? How do you, I should say, how do you take projecting where we are into account?
I I for for the current year, asking about damage control, the current year looks okay. Um our budget is adopted in um a dozen categories. Farmers market is a category, police is a category, maintaining this building is a category. Eleven of those twelve categories are on, the DMV is the only one that looks like it's going to go over. So overall, we do not have a cash flow at home. Um eleven categories are on target and one is not. But I I'm not legally allowed to move money from the police budget to the DMV budget. And so that, that's why if you were comfortable with the overall state of the finances, the supplemental appropriation might be okay. I can show you, here are things that are costing twenty thousand dollars extra and here are things that are costing twenty thousand dollars less. On the whole, it's fine.
It's also important to remember, the DMV is also a faulty year for a project. When you meet together Charlottesville. They start generating profit for their second year, correct? For the startup cost, so. You know, I don't know, I'm just, I'm not so anxious about that, you know, in terms of the long term. Um there, but in terms of what you were saying about goal-setting etcetera, I think it'd be helpful as we go into this conversation. To have a review of the goals we set last year, just to sort of say like where we are, what we're able to get done, uh because we've started some. Waterfront being one, being one run, food being another. And so I think it'd just be good to sort of recap, what were our goals? Where are we right now? And then from there, we can sort of prioritize.
Where are we right now? And then from there, we can sort of prioritize where we want to go next. I think that's helpful.
What is the GMV going to represent, assuming it becomes profitable? The town is going to be competitive with these other, you know, things you have listed on here as far as revenue generation?
Best case scenario, we have seen other communities that do manage it that way. Where in neighbors like Madison and Remington, small towns located over 29 miles of us. The DMV cupsets are the largest revenue line for town, which is very encouraging. And that was the logic that council used in pursuing this in the process. We're not there yet, but most of them in the state do operate that way.
I hate to ask a question that most of you here probably know the answer to already, but can you explain the American Rescue Plan to me?
Yes. It passed in April of last year, federal legislation totaling 1.8 trillion dollars. It's the largest single surge of unrestricted revenue that the town has ever. We've done big projects in the past, building the levee, building our shit skate improvements, but those were tailor made to one thing. With rescue plans, we pretty broadly get to set the goals for what we want to do with that. Whether improving our parks, supporting children's programs, upgrading town IT, those are all eligible uses. So council has pretty powerful tools to use this money to get us through the pandemic recovery. Scottsdale's portion of that money is a little bit over five hundred thousand dollars and it comes to us in two payments. One half we've already gotten, the next payment we'll get in July.
And to put that in the context of, again, having been sitting here almost 11 years, that's a vast amount of money. We've been getting entire years of budget.
So, yeah, that's huge. The 250,000 that we received already, like have we utilized all of it?
About 200,000 of that is in the current budget that we're working. It represents capital spending, like a police vehicle upgrade, parks repairs. There's a project to upgrade the town code and get it posted online, legally updated. So some of the back office legal work. We're matching a state grant on small business development. Police salaries and equipment costs are in there and the entire startup costs for the DMV select. The biggest thing that we're doing with Rescue Plan is providing a new community service conveniently in town.
So we do have 50K not budgeted?
Yes. There's about three hundred thousand dollars of Rescue Plan money, which can be spread out. The deadline to spend it all is Christmas 2024. But we have a couple of years yet to spread that out and get the time with things that might take a while to design a bill for that.
Yeah, spending is not normally our problem.
So a couple of things, Matt, just looking at this from a business perspective, it's. We either need to grow the revenue that we're coming in, that's coming in from these four sources. Or we have to augment that with some kind of a tax, additional tax.
Or spend less.
Or spend less, yeah. So looking at these four that are the primary sources of revenue, it looks like, just by eyeballing this, the meal taxes will increase over time. So, and that's something that we can positively affect by making the town more attractive. And it bring more people in to eat and thus spend or realize more tax revenue from that. So things like. Like the riverfront landscaping and. And maintaining our parks and things that make the town more attractive and bring people in and therefore. And give them meals here, I think is a, from an economic perspective, is a really good investment.
Yes.
Yeah. Things like the Boys and Girls Club, you know, having essentially free daycare here. And getting people to drop their kids off and pick them up every day. Coming in and out of town is going to increase the business flow for the town as well too.
That's a good point. We probably do sell Skinner because Boys and Girls Club picked up exactly. Yeah.
So, and also having the Boys and Girls Club here as a way to, to encourage people to come in and out of town. Just on their way in and out of work, I think is a really good thing. And it also keeps down our food costs. And it's really good for the kids as well too. And I think it's going to be something that's going to make the town more appealing to the people who, you know, live and buying. And living in houses that are going out. Bird Street, in fact, we passed that, especially this part.
Mr. Quick is one of the volunteers on our government services committee. He says, thank you for helping with this. You asked a really pointed question that I had not really thought about this, but what economic development work helps this chart the best? And the answer is a bank.
Yeah.
We have, we have two businesses that take that franchise tax. And per square foot, they're pretty small businesses, but they pay about the same as what Food Lion does. So if, if my marching orders were to recruit the businesses that help the town budget the most, the answer would be try to get it on the bank. And I had not thought about it that way.
Yeah. Also, we increase population, more people are going to open bank accounts, that's going to increase that tax.
Stuart, just a comment on that?
Yeah.
So just to follow on what you said, so when you think of our town budget. The most obvious thing is having more people, real simply. And although the budget is not my, anywhere near my most compelling reason why I think we need to build the new houses in Bird Street. It really is a direct impact here. So when we talk about budget, when we talk about what this does to taxes. When we talk about what it does to opportunity, even if you talk about what you said with Boys and Girls Club out, as it draws people in. You might draw people in, but if the people aren't here, it's a dramatic difference. Then it's about retaining their spending dollars, so to speak. The other thing I would say going back from a budget standpoint, now you, obviously there's increased services that you have to do with more people. But this aspect of the budget, having sat in this chair again for 11 years. We've never had this opportunity before. Like we've never sat in this position to be this close to actually have something that would dramatically impact our budget. And I would say, suggest to each town councillor, as we look at the special use permit coming up. This is a win-win in terms of how do we impact our budget? And it's actually one that impacts it a number of different ways. So that being said, if I had to say what is the one thing that I would want to do to impact our budget, it would be to pass the special system at Bird Street.
This, what stands out to me here is just, we should really be playing to our strengths as far as tourism is going. I mean, that's a huge draw that I don't think we're utilizing very well here. If you're just looking at meals tax, I mean, we could just. Ideally, increase that by a lot, just by doing festivals or sponsoring, you know, local events and stuff. I mean, those are huge draws here. So if there's a way to do that.
I mean, we have all those liquor licenses, you know, open container. Events that, you know.
We saw, we saw boost some of those. One of the nice things about meals tax is that it is paid every month. So we can, we can see the impact of bad weather. It's the revenue go down and special events make the revenue go up. And having that feedback is really helpful. But you're right, it doesn't exist.
And I think, and I mean, to this point, I think you're right. And I was remembering today, this month, this is actually about the town thing, this might be more a chamber thing. But the Artisan Trail Network, I went to a presentation about that at Danes a couple of years ago. You know, just like getting, just getting your town businesses on map, getting a sign in your windows. And all this sort of went out the window once the pandemic hit, you didn't have to think about all the stuff anymore. But like getting back on the dial with that kind of organization could really make us more of that kind of destination. So.
We really do have some great facilities to hold like larger events too. You know, you have soccer fields and the Batto Park and the baseball fields and, you know, gymnasiums and all that. We can definitely handle it. So I think we should definitely, I wouldn't mind heading that up if someone wants to.
Yeah, I think you just volunteered yourself.
Looking for a suitable place for him to show his expertise. I asked him last week if he would co-chair the next committee in the narrative, and he said he was. So now the dynamic duo.
All right.
Be responsible for getting people into town.
Just a quick comment on that. Stuart, you, when you're, which one was it? Which of the concert thing were you involved in the past? Were you involved with one of the?
Not really, no. I can't take any prior pronouns.
Well, your experience in terms of that, it might be that you chat with them just to give them some thoughts.
Sure.
Because there's all kinds of potential. And that's one of the things I have found most of the time, whenever I think I have a bright idea, somebody else thought of it 20 years ago. So, so there's been a lot of good things that have been tried that some of the projects need to be revitalized that were there. And then add in what you want to bring into it, you know, that would be a really good thing.
Quick question. Just a last thing, Matt, is that if we have any story project. I'm sorry. If we have any projects like the solar panels where we have a return on investment three years, that's a number. I mean, we put solar panels on our house, it's got a 10-year return on investment and that is still. So if we can start saving, break even and start saving money on electricity in three years, that's fantastic.
Just because we are hopefully meeting one day, one evening this week.
Yes.
How many of those licenses, are they individual licenses? How many events do we have left with that open container?
It's, it's good for 16 from July to July and maybe three.
We use three. So you can have one every Friday.
I was just gonna say.
I was just gonna say. I wish I had started sooner because we definitely. I want, I was hoping we could have done a Oktoberfest.
Yeah.
We used to do five, three, five on Friday.
Hey, there's Christmas in July, why not Oktoberfest in March?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure everybody has good, some good ideas of how we can increase tourism and revenue from tourism. Make it a destination for people, local or foreign.
Mr. Mayor, you'll be happy to know this, with your event you went to, there's a tour company that is down in Rowanau. They came here one time before the dialogue with you again, but what interests them is the ferry coming back. They want to make the ferry part of the time when they're here. So it's just, you might be nice to know that there are the various draws here that are in that area.
And I just got an email earlier this, or over the weekend, I guess it was actually. That there's a company that's going to be opening up getting Batto tours starting in the spring. Which I think is going to be a real big draw as well.
I was introduced to them before as well. They're really cool.
They're cool. Yeah.
That is a cool idea.
Yeah, yeah. I saw them, it was amazing. I was out, they were doing some exploratory work last summer and I was out on my kayak. And I paddled up, was paddling through the river and they had a boat on, a motor on the back of the Batto and they were buzzing up toward Happy Ferry. I was thinking, well, you know, once they hit the rapids, they're gonna have to turn. Man, they just whooped right over those rapids like nobody's business and kept on going. So they've got, gonna be able to go up to Happy Ferry and well beyond and do some really cool things down.
Okay, do we have any more to talk about under this?
That's helpful. So are they whining and dining on the Batto?
Yeah.
That's next level.
Yeah, man, that is next level.
Can we charge a meal tax on the river? That would be dumb. Although we don't go out the river, never mind, we just go to the bank. That's a county, that's a county.
Let's annex.
Tell us about the historical marker.
Thanks, sure. Over the past couple of years, there have been a handful of local history updates. Connected to museum work and also the ARB had some conversations with a graduate student of history and pointed her in this direction for some work. Scottsdale Museum has expanded its research to include more Black history stories in town. And this body has considered on occasion how maybe to share that as part of tourism messaging and welcoming all visitors to town. So at length, I've been able to get together some verbiage with Hillary Riley and connect with the family descendants of Ms. Minerva Bell Lewis. This is a distinctive story that we think could be, could be prime for some recognition. Go back to the census and the tax records of Scottsville from say 1901. And it's notable that there is only one black woman property owner in the whole town. In the emancipation era, many freemen became entrepreneurs in town. Skills ranging from boatmen to farriers to schoolteachers. Many started businesses, but it was, it was pretty hard to turn that business success into property ownership. Building up the wealth, getting financing, finding a willing seller was difficult. And that created a fair amount of population turnover without buying property, putting down roots in that way. It was more tempting for, for folks to move on to other places when conditions in town changed. So it does feel very notable that we had one remarkable property owner, woman, running a business in town. The location is just south of what's now happening on the James. That building doesn't stand anymore. It's closer to the river and suffered flood damage over the years and was lost. It changed town several times and now the town owns it as parking lots. But imagine on that lot a building pretty similar in size and shape to Tower on the James. Which ran as a grocery store, restaurant and boarding pass for travelers and short-term residents of the town. George Washington Lewis started that business and he gave the property entirely to his wife and their children. They raised 13 children in the community, five of whom became school teachers. One of their daughters was one of the very first students at the Virginia Normal Institute, which became Virginia State University. Which started as a teacher's college for freedmen. Hillary Riley was able to find some records of the Lewis family's social life. It used to be that newspapers would publish little stories of who was hosting. If you were in the upper crust of society, you would publish a newspaper ad of when you were having a party. Or they would write like society page reviews of the parties. So she found newspaper stories in the Richmond Planet, the leading black paper in Richmond. Describing festivities held at that building hosted by the Lewis family. And black leaders like Mr. Thompson from Charlottesville in attendance and prominent fans from Richmond. So altogether, Ms. Riley drafted this and checked in with the Lewis family, the Addicts and the Americans as well. So they feel like this, a couple of paragraphs here describes their great grandmother very well. And seeing as it is already town-owned property, it would be pretty easy to put a marker there. Maybe with a mention and treaty or landscape it appropriately, so it wasn't just a sign on the parking lot. I raise it because it's a conversation the council has had on occasion the past couple of years. And now we have this story clear in one place and titled some of the sentences on it. In the past, we had had some interest and some questions, but didn't really know enough to take action. I think now we do. So I bring this back to you as a, as a report of the story, a question of how you'd like to see.
Let me just follow up that with by saying this. So there was an article a while back that was about a lady named Margery Cross Barnett. Who's actually buried in the Union Cemetery. She was the, we think, the first African-American president. She definitely was the first woman president of the University of Houston. And there's a, a little bit of the trail that hasn't been fully. Figured out, so to speak. And this is a project, in fact, I'd like to talk to them to do a little bit more. So she's buried at the Union Cemetery, very influential educator. And I have thought in the future, maybe there's a way to honor her somehow in the big picture area. So I use that by a way of comparison, simply to say, your story, it's way more. The evidence is there, the historical evidence, it's, it's a great story. And her historical location is a great location. I mean, it's a, it's a great side. This, maybe this could be in a couple of years or something. This seems something we could do now. Simply what I compare it to and simply say, this is really exciting. I think that's really a neat story and it would be a way to add. And it would be a way to add something very positive. It's also near the Boys and Girls Club. So it's it would add a neat in the park and add a really good location for an educational stop or a way to have somebody engage in a part of the past of Scottsville that's not, it's been overlooked.
So do we go through the state agency to do those historical markers or do we just make up our own and have it there?
We we could do either. It would be faster to commission it ourselves. It's it's possible that the state would take it on. I the the white sign with black text that's on the corner of twenty inch to there now meets the state's criteria for like statewide significance. It is competitive. And they they will reject texts that they don't think is of statewide importance. And so I hesitate to apply for that.
We could just do our own.
A good example is the one in front of the county office building on McIntyre Road. Titled Triumph of the Charlottesville Twelve, and it's about school integration. The county paid for that itself because they thought that was an important story.
Well, you can also do it where you let's say cost several thousand dollars and we said, okay, we're gonna raise some money for part of it and we're gonna cover some of it. But the the concept is, I think, exciting.
And if we do it ourselves, can we get on the the state register so that it's, you know, we could print out or get a website or instead books of these things?
To help map them. Yes, yes, they do. They do or not.
Okay. So we can include, if we paid for it ourselves and installed it, would they put the dollars?
Yeah, to include it in listings of things like civil rights trails that fun built upon.
So I can there also be two pieces. Let's just say we fund piece A and they fund piece B, so to speak. Yeah, that's another thought is, so the part, the shorter term answer is our piece A, so to speak. The bigger grant comes from the bigger kiosks for piece B. I'm just suggesting that, given it does take a while sometimes, but in the long run, that might be a way to have a better impact where there's several pieces to it.
Any further discussion on that?
Yeah, like this is a great idea.
Would you would you be interested in pricing some improvements?
Yeah, let me, I used to sell bonds. So let me get you a some choices on a on a marker. Then you can decide how you want it.
That's the part I'm worried about. That's a lot of metal.
The sighting of it. I'm assuming that would be an ARB consideration, yeah?
Interested in taking that on?
I mean, yes, if we're testing doing it, we're just taking something out.
Well, if you think about this, though, this is where you can think a little bit of what we're trying to do. If you could, if, I mean, not to take too long right now, but you could talk about a marquee, like a kiosk, you could talk about a bench, you could talk about a little park. There's a whole lot of, it it's worth, if you, now that we have a concept, then let's explore it a little bit to see what might make the most sense if we look at that area, what it would actually be that purpose that it serves.
And I'm also wondering about, I know there are lots of parking spaces and I don't want to get into losing one parking spot. But I I'm just curious to see what that site looks like and see how it might be sort of.
Yeah, it's a it's a tricky site being the the parking lot between the farmer's market and the restaurant. It's it's a little bit of an eclectic piece of land now. We wouldn't want to make something that feels stuck in.
Yeah.
The location.
You don't want it to look like a bench in between two parking spaces.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Here's a nice little flower bed there just as you come in. So, you know, you use, connected up with that or sort of that became.
You could also put something on the the plaque that says near this.
That's exactly right.
You're right on the race. You're starting around the road. You're looking better here at the walk. Yeah, I see that. Yeah, plot.
So that might be that you might want to move all of that to the ARB in terms of like, you know, the actual plaque.
Do you know anybody in the ARB by the way?
Yeah. Actually, it's for those people.
So everybody, we'll give like your ideas on that and some of them there. All right, the last item on the serial was how they said we're stood that we would still keep conditions for a special use permit that might be voted upon next Tuesday night. Next Tuesday night, not Monday night, Monday or Thursday. It's really in this deal right now. So how you want to do this? You want to take this, the start of the top and do one ball one and see if you do comments or.
Do you mind if I ask a question first? I was thinking about the duplex size. And structurally, they're going to be exempted from the boundaries of their lots.
Yes.
So are those going to be bigger footprinted buildings rather than smaller? Because they're expanding the 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 gap between, you know, that space that would be in between the houses.
Good, good point.
And if our goal is affordability, does that translate to the bigger footprints?
Right. Do duplexes, of course, have an exemption from the setback on their shared wall? So you have a lot that was took two lots and then a building that sits on shadows that property one. We have the setback requirement of stepping off on the other side of those lots. So answer your question is me. If if a builder was was gonna build a duplex as required, but still wanted to fill the lot, the zero setback on that dividing wall could potentially give them a bigger building where each half of the duplex were bigger than the singles that were beside it. On the other hand, if they were more or less building the same thing, but simply attaching them, then your side yards would just be a larger.
Larger, okay.
Could go either way.
It is incorrect to say either of those options are going to be less than the single family homes.
I think so. I wish I knew more about what the cost savings on duplex was. You you save some from building on that type, but I don't know the degree of it.
The reason I'm asking is because it really is, just Stuart, coming back to affordable housing. I think you felt comfortable this was a way to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, let's make sure that it is, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I.
Sounds good.
We can figure that out.
I did look into the dividing walls, though, and those are actually more expensive to build and than the outer walls because you have to fireproof them and soundproof them. And it's actually like a masonry, like cinder block, I guess it is, up through there. So I would be curious to see. I'm sure.
Not here tonight.
Anyway, it's just some. Okay. Does he know? Does he know that the fireproofing and soundproofing on that wall makes it more or less expensive?
Mitch Lance, can you say a little bit about that?
Hey, everyone. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Yeah. So I mean, typically the the firewall, the the drywall for that, you know, one wall itself, as as you said, has to be fireproofed and that that product is typically more expensive than regular drywall that you would put in a building that's exposed on four sides. And I I would say that typically the cost savings becomes just, you know, with the fact that you're you're kind of working for the most part with crews, like in in the one structure. You're not like kind of on individual separate lots, whereas like, you know, you have the roofers come, the roofers come on one day for one entire roof structure. And so I would say there's some cost savings there just as far as labor goes. And additionally, I mean, typically duplex duplexes and unless something more of like a Villa style were to take shape, they are typically narrower. And as far as the affordability, I think it's just the the long term affordability, the the unit type itself just, you know, doesn't sell for as much as as a single family detached home long term. And in this area, we we see that pretty much everywhere.
Yeah, I got you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry to throw that in there before we get to that.
So did you get to a point where at the end of Thursday's meeting, Mr. Dallas and Mr. Warren noticed a problem in our wording here that was gotten fixed. We talked about increasing the road frontage to make these lots a little bit bigger. And council's intent on that was providing more elbow rooms between the houses. The draft that I showed you at that time still had the eight foot minimum size setbacks. And and that was working at first, you can make the lot bigger, but not required that the space between the houses be bigger. So all we've done by that is potentially allow a larger house without getting the extra elbow room.
I guess.
So the draft that's before you now does have the addition of a word on also increasing the side setbacks. So those have to be twenty five feet of park. Instead of. So that gets at what council was asking for.
Okay.
But the the document here now with apologies for the small text to make it fit on one page has all the conditions that we've discussed.
Much like my back to you, Stuart, so that between the eight and ten units, that's you're good with those numbers?
Yeah. That's incredible.
And Alex, you're good with those numbers too?
Uh, I would like to see less overall, but I don't know if that's gonna happen. So I think if that's our goal, that's gold. Somebody get one.
Yeah. I think we'll get eight rather than.
And then what?
I said, I think we'll get eight rather than ten. We say between eight and ten, we're gonna multiply and we get eight. For the simple reason that the, not what you just said, was that they're cheaper and they don't make as much money. So they're not gonna build.
Yeah.
We were trying to be specific to get that. So it at least gets that.
Yeah.
When we were talking maybe last week, we were having, so we got to this number. So to make sure there's at least eight, no more than ten.
And under the park, I'm good giving up the pond. I just don't, I just don't do that. It's a long term thing we want to take care of. So I appreciate that we have a number here, two acres that's in between those two streets. It would be public. And then that would be given to us a third park and maybe as potential dog park with future planning. So.
So I I've talked to a couple of people since last Thursday who have brought up some good points about, good points against having a park, any parks here. First, primarily being that we're responsible for it. We've got to maintain it. If something happens to somebody, they sue us on it. If you live there and if you live there and you and your house backs up onto a park like this, you're gonna, the owners are gonna encroach on it just by natural. And that that causes some friction with people who come in and use it. So that's, I mean, that's kind of a smaller thing, but even so, it's still causing friction. I'm not sure how many people from the town would go up there. I mean, it's kind of out of sight, out of mind. And I'm just not sure that the that the town really gets a lot of benefit out of that. I think the trails are a great idea. I think we should have 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 keep those. Maintaining those is pretty animal. And it gets us out of a lot of potential liability making costs.
Right, hang on that.
So to me, it just doesn't seem like a good idea. Yeah.
I think too, you you need to think about on that particular item. We were thinking about making the public access the back fleet at the end of the COVID cycle a year. We said that would be right for people. People didn't want strangers walking through their side yard. And we voted that down, but we didn't want strangers walking through somebody's property to get to a park. And this is the same thing.
Yeah, frankly, we're committed to this trail network, especially it's kind of drawn here. We aren't a way creating a park, right? But it's really just kind of a trail.
Right.
And if we're able to landscape it
Yep.
with at least sort of in its immediate surroundings and the, you know, and it kind of breaks up that two acre lot anyway. I guess what I'm trying to say is the trails themselves will create a de facto park.
Yeah, I.
People will be there.
Yep.
People will be there.
And I can see people walking through that underneath the power lines, but I can't see them picnicking underneath that.
I can see them walking around with the pond more than walking through somebody's backyard. Get to the pond. So park, we don't need a park in somebody's backyard private for the neighborhood.
Yeah.
So so Stuart, you're suggesting that this land not be a public park, but we are suggesting that there be trails.
Yeah, great. And then we keep some kind of public easement for those trails.
That's right. That's in that.
Yeah, so that as as shown, we keep all of the trails language, but to leave the part about.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
That that would be.
And we can do primitive trails around the pond without being the owners of the pond.
Yes, the same kind of surface and access easement that we have at the McFree Trail Sewer Line. Where the underlying landowner is there and you're trespassing if you leave the trail and go off through the rest of the forest.
Right.
But the trail is there.
So we're in agreement, leave the pond off. Brian, leave the pond off. Alex, you comment about leave the pond off?
Absolutely. I think that's I think that's something we should say very far away.
Keep the trail, not use the land. Anything else on there that we're, Matt, do you have any new advice for us on anything?
I I heard I heard the same, some of the same comments that Mr. Watson did. First, personally, my recommendation is very much on the facts of that. I'm not sure. On the one hand, like.
Is your fence around the park or is your fence around the trails?
On the park. But it does, it does need to be maintained. But if I put myself in the shoes of living here at house thirteen, how am I gonna feel if somebody is picnicking on that spot? Maybe I like it, maybe I don't. The the town has a maintenance obligation. On the other hand, like free land is often something you should say yes to. And if we really think it's a headache in the future, we can sell it. So my like, taking care of the town's resources says if we have the opportunity to get something, we should probably take it. But there's also, you know, look at your horse in the mouth and don't take something that's gonna be more trouble than it's worth. I'm not sure.
If they keep it within the homeowners association and put up a play area, you know, like a playground and everything else, that becomes an issue for other families using the trails. And affordability wise, I don't know how much maintenance of that land is gonna impact homeowners association fees and and encourage on the whole affordability thing that we're trying to do.
It depends what they do with it. That's that's right. In the short term, it might just stay pretty similar sort of meadow that it is now where it has, you know, tall grass and butterflies that push out twice a year. But if they if they did manicure it or or build playgrounds and maintain.
I've never seen a complex like a development like this not have a playground smack in the center of it.
Yeah.
Every single one of those.
And then it might have a resident, resident only sign on it and occasionally when you get a trespassing call.
I guess the, I mean, the the HOA won't limit our access to the trail if they do a playground up there. And I guess, you know, in terms of the, I don't know what it would cost the natureway to keep the playground. But at that point, that's really on the residents who live up there.
To decide.
That'll be their decision. That'll be their decision. And if they're like, this is too expensive, they won't do it.
Well, the the other thing to say about this is even though this is something that's it's gonna be new, we also have a lot of different mixed uses already. There's a county park, there's town parks, there's the there's the stuff that B dot does. There's also private property that people walk by. There's there's already a mixture of a lot of things. So it's not out of character to have a place where they can do what they want to do with that area as long as what we're kind of saying is, hey, we would like a trail that is accessible to people. And I think that it 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 seems very, very fair to do that.
I walked out there today and it's actually fairly rough terrain, like it's it's pretty wavy. And Mr. Shimp was saying that there's not gonna be much that grading and stuff like that. The thing that was weird to me was that there's a pretty steep drop down to the pond that I don't know if that'll be. I don't know. I think if we can cut it off there, if this ends up happening. I think it'd be best to stay away from this and trails. That sounds great. My two cents.
Which actually brings up another thing that was brought up to me, which makes a lot of sense as well, too. And I know that that the county has lots of regulations that got run off and how that's gonna work and that's all the. But my understanding is that during the course of developing that property, those, there isn't any real oversight of what goes on up there. And we have just gained access to a large section of what is directly down pull from that. So you're pushing around a lot of lands, moving things out up there. You got a big torrental rainstorm and half of that bank ends up down in the drainage pond down there. You know, how do we? You know, how do we, how do we, how does the town protect ourselves from having to clean all that stuff off? So anyway, would you put something in this little? That's with that?
I think, uh, I think that's a good question for our applicant. Tell us about compliance with Admiral County Stormwater Regulations during construction and what kind of runoff protections are in place. I, I have an idea of who I called. How, how do you see your compliance during construction?
Yeah, certainly. Thanks for the question. Um, so a, a component of the stormwater plan, so the, the stormwater plan is, is. The final product is of course how to manage runoff in the finished condition, but a component of that plan, which we need to have reviewed and approved. Prior to the stormwater plan being approved is an erosion and sediment control plan. That plan is exclusive to the construction development process. So. Um, the erosion and sediment control plan outlines, you know, where we're gonna have silt fences, if we need to have any, you know, wire enforced silt fences in certain places where we'll have temporary sediment traps. Um, and all of that is reviewed and will be approved by Admiral County during their review of the stormwater plan. Uh, in the case of um, you know, a, a rain event, the Admiral County has inspectors who come out to the site and inspect. The, the sites after major rain events and they are pretty on top of it. I know that they just hired um, some, some additional inspectors. So. At, at the moment, they're fairly on top of their inspections and going around to ensure that sites are in compliance with the approved plans.
So, so you're saying that in, in response to what Stuart just asked, it's a requirement for the construction that. The project complies with the county.
Correct, yeah. So yeah, it, it's a requirement to manage during the construction process to manage any, you know, runoff. Can dust nuisance leaving the site.
And, and there are, there are penalties for breaking that plan and I can certainly. Look for building code violations in the same way that I do everywhere else in town. If I see something that looks hazardous, I can help call back in, but it's not my job to inspect it.
One thing I will say when we were doing active construction, this is back in Streetscape two, this is the, some years ago. We, there was a good coordination between the town and with the construction that took place and that was really a good. Partnership. And I would say the same thing. We would be doing what we would do. Matt, you would work at keeping an eye on it, so to speak, and we would as a town also. Because there really is an ongoing. Would say importance for us being involved in seeing what's going on. I mean, they're gonna do what they're gonna do, but at the same time, Matt might be like, hey, we're getting a big rainstorm next week. Or is this all, can you double check this? Do we have, you know, there's, there's, there's protections that are there that we can do to protections. But we also have the Jim River Association here, which obviously we could ask them to give us special input, make sure that what we do is in compliance. Maybe it's extra because we're so close to the river. I don't know the details, but is that true? Is it, you can ask her, is there more that's done because it's close to the river?
It's not in a flood plan, but it's close to the river. Does anything change?
No, the, since it's outside of um, the, the requirements would only change in, if, if there was a applicable stream buffer, given the distance from the river, that's, that's not the case for this site, but. Um, I mean, the, the requirements are pretty stringent and, and to the point about um, just reporting concerns, Admiral County actually has a hotline. That anyone can call if they see something that, you know, they just think doesn't look in compliance. They also have an online um, form to, to submit. Just, you know, complaints to, to the county as well. And, and I, I mean, I do know that people to use that. So it's not only um, our inspectors typically coming out after a rain event. It's something where, you know, people in the community, if you're seeing something that. You know, maybe looks like it's, it's not in compliance, you can submit a concern.
Thank you. That's really helpful. That's really helpful.
Hey Matt. Clean up the volume on those speakers a little bit, just in case we have any to speak with them. I know we had issues to begin with, as loud as that.
Mr. Bowling, do you have anything to add related to that? To see how many, any advice, just because that is a, that's something important. We wanna make sure that we cover that correctly.
I'm having trouble hearing you, Dan. Can you repeat your question?
My question would be, you just heard that conversation related to drainage during construction, runoff during construction. Is there any advice or any thought to do that, any questions that that raises in your mind?
Matt, as I understand it, the county's gonna oversee any, the stormwater flow and that sort of thing, correct?
Yes, sir. The county engineer reviews these plans and they have inspectors.
And they take that pretty seriously. That's my understanding. So they're, I mean, they're not just um, going to, I mean, they, they do take their job for storm drainage pretty seriously. So I think that's pretty good protection if something goes wrong. I mean, it's not gonna be perfect. If it rains enough, you're gonna have, you're gonna have problems, but uh, in a normal situation, if they're loo, using proper um. Erosion controls, they, silt fence and that sort of thing, they should be fine. And they know they're gonna be under observation, so they normally do a pretty good job.
My uh, my kind of question on that, which I asked Mr. Shimp last time was um. Less the drainage and stuff there and more of the big equipment moving. And I was asking what the ideal kind of route would be. Taking, you know, dump trucks full of soil out of there. And I know they used to do. That on, it's on bird for the tire factory. So I've heard it's possible.
The, the turning radius is better on Main Street. The, the example that I have is when we. Need to detour traffic for the Fourth of July Parade and there's a truck that misses the big detour. They come over the bridge and turn on um. West Main, which is a wider street. And then make the turn on Harrison and Harrell. So I, I think I, I might encourage a builder to avoid the burden value intersection and use.
Yeah. Are you aware, sir, of the number of trucks that used to go use, you, used to go in that vicinity?
Not at all, not at all.
For forty years, you had some big tractor trailers that poured into town and went, used that road to get to the factory.
Yep, I'm sure.
Coming and going.
A lot of them. I just wanna make sure that if we're gonna, okay, more of them coming back, that, you know, it's not gonna block up the, the main street, cause that's the one thing I have heard is that it was. A little time consuming to get back there, so.
Well, I don't think you're gonna have, I don't think you're gonna have the volume with a construction project that you had just daily. With, I don't know what their tractor run was. Barry, you know a little, you know more about it than I do. Anybody's been here longer.
Readjust wheelbase, make the turn. One of the street signs as it went.
I appreciated that question the last time and that I was, it was reassuring to hear them also saying that a lot of the equipment's gonna come and stay during that. And it sounded too like a lot of the ground's gonna be moved around on site rather than, rather than taking out. Also the comfort.
What else?
I was really pleased with our discussion on this last time. I really think that we got some conditions in here to balance a lot of needs and I think we've got. I really feel good about this permit going forward. I think, like I said, I think we've got a lot in here. And I've done our due diligence from the planning commission to this stage to get a pretty solid, a really solid permit for, for this site.
Yeah, I think so too. I, I think the work that has been done by the planning commission and I think the work that's been done with y'all here, I think there's been a lot of good. Input to see what we can do to create a workable solution. And I also think it's a good idea that we're focusing on one area, not two at the moment. I think that'll make a lot of people happy. This, I don't know, is there anything we're missing here? Is there any last minutes?
Can I interrupt for a second?
Yes, sir.
What Stuart said, we're focusing on just the Burr Street and not Blenheim.
Right.
I missed, I wasn't at the meeting. I didn't get the memo. So what are we talking about there?
Okay, what happened was um. Mr. Shep said, if we don't put forty-eight houses up here, I forget about Blenheim altogether. He said, no, we don't want forty-eight houses. Started off about Blenheim. And what we told him was that. We want uh, some idea of what the whole hundred forty-six acres is gonna look like one day. Not just this one little section right here. So he agreed to table Blenheim with a foreseeable future, come back to a, a plan that shows what the whole. Hundred forty-six acres.
So this was, this was Thursday night, right?
So then we settled on thirty-six houses and this was, so next Tuesday. Blenheim's not even on the table yet. We just can talk about the Spur Street problem.
I'm sorry. Do we still have to vote on the Blenheim permit?
We don't have to reject.
No, or is he withdrawing that?
Basically has withdrawn it.
Legally has he withdrawn it? Or is it something we have to re-adapt? Or do we just all say, oh, forget it?
I, I, I need to clarify that, that it, it doesn't need to be acted on next week. It can stay as old business if you're not sure. Um, the applicant certainly has the right to withdraw it. Um, eventually it turns into lingering old business and would need to be denied if you wanted to work on something else later.
If we deny it, can they reply?
Yes, with some, with something else at any other time or bring the same thing back again.
Yeah.
But um, it doesn't need action next week. It can be tabled and then we can continue that conversation about revise it, deny it, do something else.
Wouldn't it be clearer to just reject it now?
So basically what we've done is the original uh, special use permit request was for forty-eight units. And we've set up, you know, meetings and, and advertise to the public. What's our next step here? Does, I mean, does the public know now that it's, it's going from forty-eight to thirty-six?
Yeah.
The recommendation from the. Yeah, yeah.
I want that to last, Katie, where this negotiation was made. That's, that's my question. What's the next step? He's withdrawn his, his request for forty-eight. He has to resubmit for thirty-six?
No, no, no. So, so the planning commission recommended thirty-six.
But he agreed to it.
Yep.
They, they recommended it and he agreed to it. That's not the same thing.
No, so, so the planning commission recommended thirty-six units.
Right.
So that's what's in front of us now.
And that's what we're gonna vote on.
That's what we're gonna, that's what we're gonna vote on.
Even though the request was forty-eight, we could say thirty-six. He doesn't have to do a new permit request.
So if you take a look at the.
We could tell if we could have had and it was.
You don't have to have another open.
Okay.
So let's do this with Blenheim. Let's have it on the agenda for a vote. Then we can vote, deny it, we can vote to table it.
Yes.
Vote to approve it, which I can do, because we want to see what the whole big concept of the whole large piece part of it.
Yeah.
For this one up here, what I was gonna say is, you still have another week to study the. The conditions and if you wanna tweak it a little further, we, we certainly have that opportunity during the I move and. All of the vote and discuss, we can, we can turn it on here at least to tweak it a little further.
And, and if you'd like any help writing that, just let me know and I'm happy to prepare multiple drafts for this. So you can introduce what you, what you see there.
Yeah, I think, Matt, what you. What you've done is really helpful, first of all. I think it's good that we. Knocked out what we knocked out tonight.
I would still honestly like to see less houses there. I think hearing from a lot of people, that would make sense, but. I guess we will see how it's written up. I think that would be an already appropriate number. I think a lot of people spoke up and, and you were talking last time about how there's a lot of uh, louder voices and quieter voices and. I did take that to heart and uh. I do also see a lot of people that I, even people I know personally that are very against it. So I'd like to. No. Do with the people that we represent, really want.
Let's just say we, we, we reject this plan, just out of there. We reject this. What's, would he have, would the people involved, the developers et cetera, have to resubmit an application and say, well, if we can't go here, we'll go back up to Blenheim? How would that work out?
Yeah, basically, yes. That um, they can.
And the process starts over?
Yes, they can, they could reapply with something different if um, if they got feedback that there was something wrong with this layout or any of the.
There might be a deal killer in here somewhere, you know, four there.
The risk you have is if you deny this thirty-six, so he can just go in there and build fourteen or whatever he wants to.
Yeah, I mean, by rights, not necessarily bad though. I think he's been able to do that for a number of years now, hasn't he?
One of the things, Alex, I, I would say.
Well, no.
No.
In this site, he could not do that yet, so just last year. And on the thirty, and on the thirty-six now, I, I personally, I like that number. I think it's a, I think it's a, I think it's a walk back from the, from forty-eight. But I'm also, I also come back to that affordability thing though. Cause if we get fewer than that number of houses, the cost of the home has to go up. And so that thirty-six number sort of balances what will be an impactful neighborhood that's gonna increase, I think it's a, it's sort of meeting our growth goals. It's less than forty-eight, so we're dropping a hundred and twenty trips a day down that street from this neighborhood. But we're also still, again, if you're about to do this affordability thing, we need a certain number of units up there to.
But does lot size correlate? Like I think something we touched on last time was that if it's a half acre or a quarter acre or an acre, you're not gonna see that huge increase in house price.
Well, what does it is the number of units. And so like.
If they're bashed, yeah, but if they're still individual houses, you know, three, three thousand square foot house or a twenty-five hundred square, square foot house, you know, whatever it is.
Yeah.
That is, you can assume that will probably stay the same. I mean. What, what would the incentive be for increasing this, where the footprint of these places? If that, if that's the house they can sell, I would think it would stick with it, but.
Yeah, I mean, for them, it's a matter of, it's gonna cost them so much money.
Yeah.
So they just divide and find the number of units, however big they are. And then that's what you gotta.
One of the things that I was gonna say to you is. In, in this work, so in, in looking at a good plan for the town. One of the things that's happened over time is that. The town has, to use a football analogy, hunted a number of times when we've come to this point of where. We actually have a good plan for the future. And one of the things that I will say as we think about where we are. Go back to what we just talked about with the budget. So when we think about where we are, anytime that I've had people here who look at what we are as a town, they will absolutely say we need more people. And what's happened. There's been a lot of scare tactics that have been used, not just now, but in the past. And the one thing that I would say that is, and I'll say this on a personal note. I get very frustrated when people come and tell me what they care about is like their own personal interest. And I'm gonna say this to you directly. You may, you may remember me lamenting this to your dad. So years ago, when I was on the town council, when the Dollar General moved to where it is next to my house. I made a decision at that point that I was not gonna stop it there. I didn't want it there. I didn't want it next to my house. I didn't, I. But I thought it would be wrong for me to do it out of my own personal interest, what I thought was best for me. I thought it was best for the town to allow it to be there. So I'm the living proof of deciding not to use my power as a town counselor to do something out of my personal interest. And I would say my interest, the reason I'm willing to go to that for this. Is because I feel like. The loud voices in town, they're not being persistent, they're being insistent. They're pretty much saying, do it our way or not. And there's a big difference between persistence and insistence. Insistence means. You do it my way or no other way. And what I'm simply saying, I'm totally willing to come up with a, a compromise here of what's usable. We have. A, a developer who wanted to build forty-eight houses. We've recently even had people floating an idea of twenty-four houses. It seems interesting that thirty-six is right in the middle of that. So for me, this idea of finally doing something for our town and not continuing, a lot of people wanna live in the past. And I would simply say, this, the reason I would stick my neck out for this and have. The opportunity is, I, I gain nothing from this other than having people dislike me, so to speak, out of people out there who are adamant that it's, and they're just simply wrong. What we need to do as a town. We need to provide a place where people can come and live. We need to have, provide a place where people, where kids can grow up, where those kids from the. The Boys and Girls Club, actually, there could be families around here and we've been so myopic. The Boys and Girls Club, actually, there could be families around here and we've been so myopic as a town for so long that we've. Seen forty people leave the town in the last ten years and we haven't added the housing stock, it's not very, it's very simple. From a public policy standpoint, this is really, from a people's personal opinion standpoint. It's whatever people feel. So I I simply say to you, on a personal level, what do I gain from this personally, what's my personal gain? My personal gain is is to have new people, new opportunities. Places where kids can grow, people can live, what I wanna see is this town grow, I wanna see life happen here, I wanna see, I wanna see life. I wanna see more of that and instead of that being said, these conditions here are very reasonable conditions. None of this is gonna be perfect, if we are waiting for the perfect solution, that won't happen and I will say there are people out there in the may say are group. They will stop, they they do not wanna see anything happen, they will, and I, that's for real. Some of them I've dealt with for a while.
I don't, I don't have a personal gain from this.
I'm not saying you do, I'm not saying you either.
But another point about development of the town that I've been thinking about and kind of turning over is. The guy that owns eighty percent of the available land of the town hasn't done anything with it for years and so I don't want the town to be held hostage on this deal right now. I know a lot of people have done a lot of really good work on this and I don't wanna see that thrown away. And totally willing to work with it, but that is a fair point to make, the guy that can develop. Has been able to and has not for a long time.
E- except for he hasn't, because he couldn't do this kind of development on Bird Street. That's different, but we're hunting it.
Yeah.
You know, we're not doing this.
No, no, I understand that, but if. He has been able to.
Yeah, well, he platted those things on the recession, you know, I mean, there's like, it's like other things.
Well, I'm not, you know, I'm not, again, I'm not throwing stones at at the developer, but. I just think that there's a point to be made that. There the places that this town can grow are pretty much all locked up by the same guy. And that guy, you know, has not done much with them, but it's absolutely his right to do, absolutely his right to do, I'm not coming at him, I just want. You guys have been great, they're kind of walking me through this process and I'm getting my feet under me a little bit and I'm kind of more. Willing to talk and so I thank you for that, I just wanna get things off my chest and. Get what I'm thinking out and then do.
We started with the proposal for everything, there's seventy two new houses around here and everybody that talks there, seventy two new houses, now we're, we've cut that in half. We've eliminated one whole project right now. So we've cut everything in half, so let's, I think we we need to seriously think about going forward with it, with that Charles decision. And as I say, next week, we will have a motion, we'll have a discussion before we take the vote. And if you do anything with this list to make it more appealing to yourselves or the developer or whoever you wanna look at it, we'll do it then. Okay? We we need to do something where like somebody said it's Saturday, we need to change something now, within another twenty years, we'll still be talking about what they're gonna do with Bird Street.
Pardon me, I did get a question online about and the option for an indefinite deferral on Blenheim. And I I don't know what that term means, but it looks like a another option on the Blenheim. Mr. Bowling or Ms. Line, could you, could you help me with the option of what does an indefinite deferral do?
Not sure, I know what indefinite deferral means, I'll let the the land surveyor speak, but you know, somebody has the right to request a deferral and then. You you can grant it or not. But basically, customarily, it's granted, it takes it off the table, they may bring it back next week, I would. I would assume in this case, that's not their intent, but they can speak for themselves.
Alright, yeah, thanks so much for that, Mr. Bowling, so the, I guess the indefinite deferral term and Matt, I was just hopping through the the code. To see if you had a at a similar term, that's just the terminology that's often. Used in a few other localities where it basically, as Mr. Bowling says, it takes the application off the table for a vote, it is. In somewhat of a limbo state and it's largely. Just to avoid an outright denial. And and give the application an opportunity to be modified, reconsidered, brought back. And so, because typically, and I'm not sure whether this is a state code or local code requirement, but typically. Any type of denial on a specialty use permit or rezoning cannot be considered. Within one year and and I'm not sure, hopefully, Mr. Bowling can weigh in on that, that might, if that's not a state code requirement, then it's not really a a problem, but. If you all, you know, ten months from now, wanted to see a revised special use permit and we wanted to kind of reactivate. Our special use permit request that had been an indefinite referral that, I don't know, perhaps you couldn't consider that. Although in that case, it would be drastically different, I guess.
Yeah, that's that's a good point and and off the top of my head, I'd have to look at the state code in the county, they have, they have that as a as an ordinance requirement, as you know.
Yeah, yeah, and so.
And you see that in a lot of jurisdictions. As to that sort of requirement, to keep people from bringing the same thing back over and over and over again, once it's been essentially shot down.
Correct.
My understanding in this case, nothing's been shot down, it's more of a sense that, well, the the town council wants to see the full. You know, picture of what's what's what the project is gonna look like with the full one hundred and forty acres, is that right? The amount of the acreage, how much acres is involved here?
Yeah, the total is one one forty six of the entire parcel, but not, I don't, not all of that is zoned.
I mean, they had questions, maybe, well, you're doing it piecemeal, what's it gonna look like for the whole thing, which I think is a very legitimate request. You know, given the given the nature of the town and that. Given what their history is, they're brand new to the to this business.
Okay, but that's awful, thank you, so the the action, you you could. Kill it or put it on my support. Depending how you wanted it to continue in the future.
So the statement that was made earlier that it was off the table is erroneous.
Well, you you.
That's where I'm. I'm I'm talking aloud so everybody can hear me. And and I wasn't here at that meeting, so I'm a little confused. Because I'm getting the feeling that it's off the table just for the purpose of this vote, to pass Bird Street and then it could pop up. Like, and there's gotta be legalities involved there, right, Mr. Bowling, you said a year?
No, I don't think it, I think I'd have to look at the state code, I can do that pretty quickly if you bear with me and have some time to wait. But I know that the the year is just an arbitrary thing that you see in a lot of ordinances as to when it can be brought back.
We just asked it, just 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 to clarify, when we were talking last week, as we were dialoguing. All they said was, it seemed as though the will of the council was to work on Bird. And the other one, there wasn't any will to work on that at the moment, that people wanted more of a plan, so it's just that one you. I think the easiest way to say that was, it's awful.
The reason, the reason, the reason you see these requirements in other jurisdictions.
We can, it's up to us to decide what we wanna do with that, so if we wanna reject it, we move to reject it and that's that's passed, then it's off the table. For good, you gotta come back with a new idea or the same idea again.
And I'm all for seeing the whole project, that's what I've said.
Yeah, see, I would have loved to see the whole project.
Only thing I've seen is these little squares on the white piece. And the one photograph, that's a demo shown of something that may look like this project. At the time it was presented, they the the folks said, this isn't exactly, you know, what we were talking about. And it couldn't be, because, you know, that picture might be two years old and deciding whether it might have changed, I don't know. But, you know, I just, I'm a little confused when you say it's off the table, it's not off the table.
We can make it off the table next week.
So I I don't wanna see us go into an informal or formal or legal agreement with anybody. And then all of a sudden, you know, we get. You know, they're later.
Well, I understand, sir, you all have to understand that this is, you're talking about somebody's property, land and. Nothing's ever off the table with property rights in in America. That's the way our system and our legal system is set up. You 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 don't, you don't really have the power to bind. The next town council say, you said, we don't wanna see this land developed forever, that doesn't work, so, I mean, what what we're talking about here is. I'm not really sure what we're talking about, I think off the table describes it as well as anything, it means it's not before you, no longer. Set for hearing, that sort of thing.
What I heard, when I hear something's off the table, I figure that's it, so it needs to be. A little bit better at the town for me.
But you're talking about a piece of property and it's it's not off the table for in perpetuity. It's it's off the table, at least for this consideration that's before you now, he. Can bring back something else, either it be the same thing or some different variation or what have you. And then that that issue is then addressed at that time under the your zoning ordinances that you have.
Okay, well, that that helps, but you're basically saying the same things that I was concerned about and 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 stated in my. In a simple way.
I know, but there's no way to get around it, I mean, you're talking about real property. You're you're and they, people have rights under under to use that real property, subject to your regulation of those rights in a zoning ordinance.
Understand that and then just from a, you know, an old country point of view, I believe. That people have a right to do what they want to with their property, if it doesn't infringe upon anybody else's health, safety a- and their rights as property owners. And I'm, you know, even when it comes down to government, I believe in less government. And we've got regulations on top of regulations, top of regulations, so, yeah, I mean. I don't know if there's anybody scared of a double wide up there, I suppose it was gonna be built, because I I really don't know what's going in there, it might look like a double wide.
Well, I think right now he may have the right to put thirteen double double wides in there, to tell you the truth. I don't think he'd do that, because it would call, he'd never get, the reason he wants to have more units is because his infrastructure is so expensive. And his market is limited too. And he wouldn't put the double wides in, well, he may, you know, certainly he could sell them, but he, but the land probably costs too much to do that.
We also got last time media, someone has already made an offer, you know, the exact relationship there was, but a builder in Charlotte. Basically approached Shimp with, hello, we are, they're a good builder and they, you know, just gave us, they brought us the office. So that we could see the homes too, so, and we've got something here about.
They approached, I think they approached us, right?
No, that was, that was a, an email we were privy to, as far as my understanding is.
And so part of what we put in the conditions of the facade variety, to try to ensure there isn't just cookie cutters and stuff up there.
Cause that might be the man we need to talk to if we will, you know, see what things are gonna look like.
Yeah, that's why we got it.
Anything else?
Well, I guess if any other, the planning commission things, I guess, cause there's other like landing stuff potentially, cause.
I'm sorry, yes, there there is one more that's coming up on agenda next week from planning commission. And that's the old Goko property at three eighty five East Main Street. As Mr. Grisco said, planning commission did hold their public hearing and had a recommendation to approve that special use permit with no conditions. So that would be up for council to advertise and consider next month, if you please. Planning commission did mention that ARB has a role in there, particularly related to the light fixtures. And any repairs that need to be done.
But we still have to approve, what's up with approving this gas station, yes, especially.
The the restaurant and convenience store are by right, but because it's in a historic district, we don't think of gas stations as being. Necessarily appropriate in the historic district, so we, the reactivating the gas station needs a little more. Planning commission was not worried about it, but it doesn't make that selection.
The other thing, this is just for us all to consider, cause I've been thinking about Airbnb a lot, because they've come up and. Our last, the last one we approved, we were just sort of greenlighting there, cause transient lodging is a necessity in this town, especially for promoting tourism. But after the last one, I think Lauren Lucy, you know, council at the time, gave me some pause to say. We should probably start thinking about how we're doing this. And I'm dumb, they're coming down the pipe and some of them are like part of business models, you know, which makes sense to me, and so it might be helpful. For us to do like, have a focus, ARB discussion, or Airbnb discussion, sorry. About the criteria that we want to use to evaluate them, cause I don't think any given Airbnb should be a, will be a simple up or down. And I think planning commission should be part of that conversation too. Cause one of the things that that I've been thinking about is, you know, we don't wanna, like, if there's an existing apartment. And one of the things we want is diversity, housing in town and affordability, I'd be hesitant if someone came forward and said, hello. I'd like to get a special use permit to turn my currently functioning apartment space into an Airbnb, I'd be hesitant about that. If, however, someone came with a commercial building and they were going to turn one small part of that building into an Airbnb. That might not otherwise be attracted for a long-term residence, I'd be like, okay, that makes sense. Cause A, it's not gonna be an apartment otherwise, and too many trains in line, and so. I feel like it might be helpful to flesh out some of those ideas, because I think. Having a mix of those things is good and like I said, I think some of our businesses and tourists need them, but I also am worried about losing. Space, that's important residential space, to transient lodging. So I just wanted to put that on everybody's radar, so I think talk, I think us talking that through to the body would be helpful. Before we get a permit and it might even be helpful, like I said, sharing that with planning commission, so that when they're doing it. They don't approve something and then it comes here and we reject it or something like that.
Just to piggyback off of that, I have heard a rumor recently, first of all, how many? Licensed Airbnb lodgings do we currently have?
Ten or so.
Cause I've heard a rumor that there are, it's much higher if you go onto the Airbnb website. And that there might be some Airbnbs running that have not come to us for licensing.
Planning commission did encourage me to check out.
And I I heard that number could actually be doubled, like how many Airbnb Scotts role is currently operated on the Airbnb website. Also, with the licensed one, and it may not be information that we're privy to, is there a way to find out? What the occupancy in a in a month looks like, cause if if we have ten licensed Airbnbs. That are so full that other people are trying to to book them and they can't, you know, they they're not able to get it or whatever. Then, yeah, let's approve all the Airbnbs. But if they're sitting vacant twenty eight out of thirty days a month. Do we need to take away housing to to make more Airbnb?
Yeah, that would be good, yeah. It also be good to know where transient lodging falls in our budget.
Sure.
It'd be like, cause I think that's another part of the story in terms of rent, right, because that tax comes back to us in some way.
It does.
It does, that's just another thing, because we're also promoting tourism, one of the other, like, cause I. I did like a cursory Google search about this, and my Google search was how many Airbnbs are back? That's like what I wanted, I'm like, was there a tipping point where the percentage of Airbnbs wrecked the local economy? There wasn't a number, unfortunately, but there, what there was, was concerns about loss of residents, you know, lots, so you get just a transient thing. Also, but also a tax base thing, cause apparently what was on this archive, I think it might be or something. But like the transient tax from like a regular hotel is higher than when you get your marriage.
We do not have that distinction, that could exist in other places, but the tax rate is the same, there may be enforcement problems, like I would trust. Holiday into always paying on time, and if the same thing was spread among thirty Airbnbs, we have. So at a, at the city scale, you get less.
So but but I think in terms of going to our budget conversation, I think I I'd be curious to know, how much do you collect in a year? From Airbnb rentals?
Okay, that's that's a good question. Okay, that's that's a good question.